And that's seconded by councillor Collins. Or councillor Whitehead.
So the motion would be to refer back to the Public Works Committee for a staff report to the Public Works Committee. Correct. Councillor Whitehead, please, that's the suggestion.
I'll tell you what we did. That's why it's kind of funny we're doing, the direction is the exact same direction that we followed. So I guess I declare further clarification, what we're asking for this time at Public Works, that was not existing at the last Public Works meeting.
Just a report to all council members and not just committee members? That's why as a committee member I support you, but I believe that non-committee members are not there. So let's just be all encompassing. I appreciate that.
And also is, I had, as the Chair of the Committee, I had asked where the, you brought it to my attention, and the clerks had to tell me that it's here on the blotter. So councillor Marula, seconded by councillor Collins, to refer the issue back to the Public Works Committee for a staff report to that committee.
And to ensure that all members of council are carbon copied or CC'd accordingly as well, just so that we, next council meeting, we're all on the same page.
Okay.
With the staff report, that's correct.
On the referral, councillor Clark, please.
So I just want to make sure, and I support what councillor Marula's suggesting, that the Public Works Committee report 13-014, which had the original recommendation, we get to see again.
Okay.
Because that's not here, and that's why I have the concern.
Okay. And I'm sure councillor Whitehead will ensure that happens.
Hence the reason for the referral.
All those in favor? The motion, okay. Anything else? Anyone on the Public Works Committee? Councillor Whitehead, I think I go to-
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Scott De Val, that the seventh report of the Public Works Committee be adopted and the information section received.
All those in favor? Opposed? The motion is carried. The Planning Committee presents its ninth report for 2014 and respectfully recommends one. Councillor Marula, please, item one.
On item one, Mr Deputy Mayor, I'm very proud to announce this evening that I did request that 103 Kenneworth Avenue North be designated in Ontario, or within the Ontario Heritage Act, and that is our library on Kenneworth Avenue North. I think most people recognize in this city, particularly those in their senior age, recognize the importance of this designation. We recently renovated the Kenneworth Avenue North Library in the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars, and with the assistance of councillor Jackson, who I worked with to have that happen, as well as councillor Pearson, who sits on the board with the, with the library board. I felt for a number of years that it was being neglected, however, we received hundreds of thousands of dollars of renovations, and as a direct result, I'm proud to say that not only do we see the importance of it today, but also in the future through this designation. And I must applaud council for supporting my initiative, and I look forward to this finally being resolved. Kenneworth is probably one of the most underrated, if not undervalued, properties in all of the city, if not all of southern Ontario. We've seen a renaissance on Ottawa Street from the time I was elected to now, where property values have increased by 300 percent. We have the largest inner-city redevelopment in all of Canada at the Centre Mall. We also now are sitting on Kenneworth Avenue North, and this property, and I can assure you, we've had some movement towards investment at the Strip Mall that was recently redeveloped, the Indian Centre that's being developed, the incentive programs that we, as a council, supported as a result of my initiative regarding the BIA incentives without actually creating a BIA. And now we've seen some movement. We've had a number of developers come forward, looking at actually purchasing literally a block of properties to demolish and redevelop. Now, I say within the next 10 years, Kenneworth is going to be booming, and I look forward to that day coming to fruition. Until then, we have seen millions of dollars invested between the native centre and the Strip Mall, as well as the public investment at the library. One thing I must say, I'm very disappointed in, is that what I inherited on Kenneworth was literally a license to create crack houses or crack dens, we're across from the Ukrainian Centre, which we, as a council, fought at the OMB to try to reverse, to no avail. The fact that those were legally ever entitled to exist, to me, is a shame to what I inherited, and I say to you, I will continue to fight to eliminate those on a daily basis, as you and I both know, I will do. But we will get to a point where Ottawa Street will see, or sorry, Kenneworth Street will see the same resurgence as I saw during my tenure on Ottawa Street, and I appreciate your time, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Thank you for your cogent comments regarding the designation of the Kenneworth Library. Councillor Collins, please.
Yes, Mr Chairman, what can I say about my good friend councillor Marula, that he already hasn't said about himself? But I, I do want to take this opportunity to commend him. He has worked, I think we're all aware, of the initiatives, not just on Ottawa Street, but on Kenneworth, and the designation of the library is an important part of the plan that he's developed with the adjacent neighbours, and I want to commend him this evening for the hard work and his dedication to that area of the city.
Item one.
Chair.
Two.
Chair.
Three.
Chair.
Item three, councillor Partridge, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. And item number three is with regards to a heritage permit application within the Waterdown Heritage District, and I just want to say how much I appreciate the residents there. They're just doing an amazing job cleaning up these properties. Griffin Street has a number of heritage properties on it that, it really, it's just, the whole town of Waterdown, it's wonderful to visit and see all the heritage properties. So I just wanted to extend my thanks and appreciation to my residents for this. Thank you.
Item three.
Chair.
Four.
Chair.
Five.
Chair.
Six.
Chair.
Sorry, on which item? Six? Six, councillor Whitehead, please.
Thank you. Mr Chair, we had a report at Emergency Community Services, which is coming later. This is regarding an application for approval of draft land condominium conversion, so for lands located at 12 Proctor Avenue. So can I just ask, maybe I read this wrong, this is not taking rental units and converting to condos, is it? Is it part of that conversion? Thirty-four units?
It's the other way around.
Are we going from rental to condo?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, yes, that is the case.
Okay. So I've raised issues in the past regarding this issue. We had a report, you'll see later, and in that report, 90 percent of the communities that do conversions have a 3 percent target. We have a 2 percent target in regards to vacancy, which concerns me. The second piece is, staff couldn't provide, because we haven't done the study, the ability to determine whether the quality of our rental units is going down because of the amount of conversions that's taking place. I know that I'm hearing from many organizations and groups that the quality of the rentals, the ones that are low quality are the ones that are not getting converted, the ones of higher quality are getting converted, which means that the stock that's left behind in that 2 percent or 3 percent vacancy is a lower quality stock, which gives very little choice for new people, young people, moving in this community looking for rental units. And for those reasons, I cannot support six. Thank you.
Councillor Clark, please.
Yes, thank you very much. Maybe we can just hear from Mr Thorne or Mr Robichaud with regards to what approval rights we do have on condominium proposals that come forward?
Through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, can you clarify the question in terms of approval rights?
Yeah, we're talking about condominium conversions, and my understanding is that the city council has limited authority with regards to preventing a conversion, and that the conversion could be approved as long as we met certain thresholds in terms of vacancies, et cetera. So has all of that been taken into consideration with this particular application?
Through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, yes, that's correct. There are thresholds in terms of vacancy rates that are looked at in terms of prior to allowing a conversion. I, sorry, I can't tell off the top of my head what those thresholds are, but those were looked at in terms of evaluating the application.
Okay. And do we know what the value is going to be for the condos? Because we have a pretty wide disparity in Hamilton in terms of what the cost of a condo is. It can be relatively affordable, all the way up to, I ain't going to pay for that no matter how much money I make. So do we know what this one is going to be?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't know what the price point is on the condos in that particular project.
Okay. Okay, I still support where we are, based on what the laws are currently, and it would be problematic for us to stop it. I understand councillor Whitehead, he's been raising this concern for two years now with regards to the slow conversion of rental properties across the entire city, and his intention is well-founded. There is a concern, but I think that we need to, as a city, holistically look at it, as opposed to on a one-off site, and perhaps make sure that all of our policies are in place to prevent the loss of rental housing, especially affordable rental housing. And I would be very supportive of that type of review and strategy, but to object to this on a one-off is problematic. Thank you.
Councillor Farr, please.
Just, as alluded to by the first speaker, the conversions of rentals to condominium item was a report from staff in Emergency Community Services. Item four, we received it, I think unanimously, and that's before us tonight, is item four in the Emergency Community Services agenda. Basically, and in a nutshell, as Chair of the Committee, we heard in that report that there's a vacancy rate level that is not of a concern, but they did state for the record that they would continue to be diligent in watching the issue closely. I commend councillor Whitehead, actually, and councillor McCarty and others who have, many years ago, took a close look at this and asked for staff to keep an eye, and then ultimately, I believe it was councillor Whitehead who asked that staff deliver the report. I should note, though, that just on the point of concern for new and higher quality or good quality rentals, notwithstanding the point that was just made by councillor Clark, seven stories coming soon over here on Main, new rental in downtown Hamilton, and last council, we ratified a five-story rental for Wellington Street South, which is, I believe, about 42 units. So I think there's a market again, at least in Hamilton, we're seeing developers stepping up and seeing that the market is actually suggesting that it's not a bad investment, and it's a good sign, because you're talking just on those two alone, well over, I think, 100 units, that we could also keep an eye on diligently through Emergency Community Services. So I approve what's before us here.
Councillor McCarty, please, and then I'll go to the motion.
Thanks, Mr Deputy Mayor, and hats off to councillor Whitehead for following this issue. Certainly, the Emergency Community Services report said we're okay for now in terms of the percentage. It's 2 percent is our target, to stay below 2 percent vacancy rate, and we'll continue to support condo conversions until we get around two or over two. There was much discussion about actually changing our target to 3 percent, which a number of other municipalities have done to protect their rental stock from condo conversions. So we're kind of right on the bubble at this point in time, and we may well, in the very near future, be making changes. And the staff indicated they'll be reporting back, likely in the first part of next year, with a more comprehensive update on the report. The interesting part of this, though, the staff in the Emergency Community Services report provided a summary of about seven or eight examples, which they said weren't complete. There were more than that, but they grabbed some examples. And the tricky part about this for us, as a city or as a council concerned about our budget, as you know, the multi-residential rental properties are taxed at 2.74, and condos are residential, are taxed at 1.0. So we actually had a, just in that example, about seven or eight properties, we lost about 100, over $100,000 in tax revenue, and we only gained about $14,000 with the condo conversions that occurred. So that's another aspect that we're going to need to pay attention to, along with the affordable housing part, which is, of course, a very important part. Exciting to hear about the new rentals. Remember, we made the tax change to say that new rental properties will be taxed at 1.0 versus the old rental, the existing rental, at 2.74. No doubt, some of the developers are reacting to our incentive, the smart policy by this city council. Thanks.
Councillor Whitehead, and then we'll go to the motion.
Thank you, and just for brevity, I will not get into the debate when the Emergency Community Services report comes forward, because we're basically having that debate now. So I appreciate it. I just wanted to also indicate that I did move a motion for staff to do a feasibility on, a feasibility to do a study on the quality index of our rental units, and bring that back to council for consideration. So I just wanted to provide that context as well. Thank you.
Six.
Chair.
Seven.
Chair.
Eight.
Chair.
Councillor Pearson, please, item eight, please.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor, just wanting to thank my colleagues on committee. This is an application for rezoning of a parking lot on a property next to the Gateway Ice Facility in Stony Creek, and it's for expansion of this facility. It's a $25 million pre-pat arena currently, and I'm really excited. There's been a lot of development and growth with regards to sport facilities, private facilities in War 10. So this is just allowing things to continue to bring great improvements to that area. Thank you.
Okay. Eight.
Chair.
Nine.
Chair.
Ten.
Chair.
Councillor Johnson, I believe you have an amendment for item 11, please.
Yes, I do, and it's in front of you right now. It's moved by myself, seconded by councillor Judy Partridge, that item 11 of Planning Committee report 14-009 be amended by deleting and replacing the recommendations to read as follows. Would you like me to read it all?
I think everybody has it in front of them.
It's right in front of you, and I move it, and seconded by councillor Partridge, please.
We ready to go to the motion? All those in favor?
Chair.
Opposed? The motion as amended.
Chair.
Carried. Councillor Johnson, may I please have a motion on the report as amended?
Yes, but you've seconded it, so I'll have to switch it over. It's fine? Okay, so moved by myself and seconded by the Deputy Mayor of the Month, councillor Russ Powers, the ninth report of the Planning Committee be adopted as amended and the information section received.
All those in favor? Opposed? The motion's carried. The General Issues Committee presents its 12th report for 2014 and respectfully recommends one.
Chair.
Two.
Chair.
Three.
Chair.
Four.
Chair.
Five. Councillor Clark, on item five, please.
Thank you.
And then councillor Pearson?
Very much. I have an amendment to item five. Everyone should have the yellow copy. This is with regarding, with regards to the industrial development charge rate. When we were at the General Issues Committee and we moved the motion to phase in the DC increases, my assumption was that that motion was going to capture both the residential and industrial. I later learned in a conversation with Mr Zagarik that it didn't. So we have that motion before us. It's the same principle in terms of not trying to impact, in a negative way, investors who are presently looking at industrial development. So it phases the process in with no increase in the first year, 50 percent in the second year, and 100 percent in the third year. There is a typographical error, Mr Zagarik, on item E3. It actually says currently $12.44 per square foot. It should be $11.44 per square foot, so if you can make those changes. And this is moved by myself and seconded by councillor Pearson, and if you can come back to me after the amendment is dealt with, I'd like to speak to the main motion, please. Thank you.
We're ready to deal with the amendment now. Discuss, all those in favor?
Chair.
A question on the amendment? Councillor, please.
Thanks, Mr Deputy Mayor. I don't remember the discussion in this context at the Committee. I certainly remember the residential development charge and the phase in, and of course, we had the homeowners here to explain that to us in terms of the people that have purchased a house perhaps eight months ago, and they have to go back to them and saying, by the way, council raised the development charges, and we need another couple of thousand dollars or whatever it might be from you as a homeowner, and they have to step up and pay this. But it seems to me it's, at least I always felt that the industrial real estate was quite different than the residential real estate, and I don't, and I may have missed it, my apologies, but I don't recall a discussion about the phase in for industrial development charges at all. So I wonder if I could ask through you to staff, perhaps Mike, to remind us where that was in the report, or what the differences between residential and industrial, if any. Mr Deputy Mayor.
Through you, Mr Zagarik, please.
Through you, Mr Deputy Mayor. The staff report, FCS 14-033, provided two alternatives on page 21 of 25. The first alternative was the residential development charge rate, the phase in of the residential development charge rate, which, as I understand, Committee dealt with and approved that phase in. The second alternative in that report, and it was on page 21 of 25 of that report, did identify, similar to the residential phase in of the industrial, or the non-residential, sorry, the industrial development charges, as identified in the motion with the correction in terms of the typo error in subsection three. And the rationale staff identified with respect to that alternative is, you may recall through our budget deliberations, that staff were identifying a decrease, a significant decrease, in our non-res development for 2014 and 15 relative to the previous five-year average. So given the fact that our non-res and our industrial development and per square foot, you may recall, Committee may recall, that we're forecasting, I believe, approximately 750,000 square feet of non-residential development in 2014, 15. That's a significant decrease from previous years. So given the fact that we're forecasting a decrease, given some additional indicators in terms of, again, and economic developments often identify the impact that development charges have with respect to industrial developments, that staff identified this as an alternative for Committee's consideration. So again, it was part of the staff report on page 21 of 25. It was an alternative for Committee's consideration.
Thanks, Mike, Mr Deputy Mayor. And Mike, we had a discussion about the residential development charges being phased in, and we talked about what loss that would be to the city in terms of starting right away with the full change in the development charge, as compared to having it phased in over this period that's talked about here, from July of 2014 through January through July 2015, before 100 percent comes in. What is the estimated loss in revenue with the phase in for the industrial development charge? Mr Deputy Mayor.
Getting the information for you, councillor?
Through you, Mr Deputy Mayor. Every six months, it would represent approximately $400,000 in forgone revenue.
Every six months, so that's, it's about a one-year period here, so that's $800,000 that, sorry, $800,000 that will be lost as a result of the phase in, if I can just clarify that. Mr Deputy Mayor.
Through you, Mr Deputy Mayor. That would be the impact of the industrial, recognizing that in terms of our total exemptions, and I'm not sure if it was raised at the standing Committee, is on our water, on our rate side, we fully fund our exemptions, and so there is some reduction in some exemptions. So the net impact, for instance, on our rates may be less, the net impact of the reduction of some exemptions with the phase in of the residential, and if approved at council today, the industrial.
So, Mr Deputy Mayor, the problem I'm having is there was virtually zero discussion about this issue at Committee, at GIC. Lots of discussion, extensive discussion, both from the stakeholders, the Hamilton and Halton Homeowners Association, and council, or GIC, about the residential development charge phase in. I don't recall any discussion about the industrial development charge phase in, whether it be from the real estate business or those folks who are out there who may be affected by this. We didn't have the same explanation about how it might catch up to people that had bought land previously, or, it's very different than buying a house, buying land. So, and the industrial development tends to happen over a longer period of time than buying a house. You don't buy a factory, you buy the land, it takes a while to build the factory, and I think that, I think the two are extremely different than each other. So I have a hard time understanding why this is before us tonight, having no discussion at Committee, and really believing that two different types of development charges, residential and industrial, are very, very different in the way that they affect the people that have to pay the development charge, the homeowners versus someone who's going to buy industrial land and actually build a factory later on. That takes time, and I'm very uncomfortable with this at the moment, so I certainly can't support it.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak to the amendment, before I go back to councillor Clark a second time? Councillor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Deputy Mayor, and I appreciate the opportunity to clarify some things, and I appreciate councillor McCarty's comments. To be clear, I think I said on my preamble that it was my fault that the industrial amendment was not put forward. I thought, when I moved the motion to phase them in, both the residential and non-residential were being captured, and then I learned after the meeting that we only captured the residential side. So that's why the amendment is here. The amendment, proposed amendment, the option was in the report on page 25 of the report. I can tell you that in speaking to CEOs who are wanting to set up factories or looking at setting up factories in industry in our area, it is, as councillor McCarty indicated, a longer process, but once they get to that two-year mark just outside of where they're beginning, it's all budgeted. So if there are changes to DCs or changes to our exemptions during that period of time, it can have serious ramifications on whether or not that business chooses to proceed. They don't have to build, they may own the land, they don't have to build. They may not own the land, they don't have to buy the land. So the other op, the other item that, and I think Mr Zagarik can speak to, or Mr Everson, is that we are in a dramatically different environment than we have been in the past with regards to the competitive nature of our municipalities around us. So when industry is coming and looking, they're not simply coming to Hamilton because we're close to the highways, they're also going to Brant, they're also going to London, they're also going to KW, they're going to regions around us to make those decisions, including Niagara. And a number of those municipalities froze their industrial rates this year. So we need to remain competitive with it, and if Mr Zagarik could speak to some of those comparators, it would be very helpful. I don't know if we have them there, maybe Gary, the consultant that assisted our staff, could provide that information to our staff.
It was in the report, yeah.
Through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, and I can start, and I'm not sure if Mr Everson wants to provide any additional information. In the staff report, we did identify that our industrial development charge rates, if approved at the $11.42 per square foot, puts the city of Hamilton nearer to the top range of industrial DCs relative to our comparator group. So just to cite some examples of municipalities that will have lower industrial development charges, Guelph would be lower to Hamilton's proposed $11.42, Guelph's is $9.09, Ottawa's is $8.47, Branford's is $6.22, and London is reported at zero. So just in terms of our comparators, is the ranking of the city's industrial DCs is shifting towards the higher range. In terms of our residential, we would continue to be in the middle of the pack of our comparator group. So I'm not sure if Mr Everson has any additional information.
And Mr Everson, if you could just provide some quick comments on that?
Through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, yes, I think in this council chambers and the Committee I've expressed the opinion that once we hit above 10 percent, $10, it's a tipping point. The phase in here allows for a number of things. As councillor Clark points out, and correctly so, we are in significant competition with the municipalities to the west of us. We also noticed that there's been a decline in industrial over those last year, but it's just not unique to Hamilton, it's across southern Ontario. So for us to remain competitive is very important. The other important issue about the phase in is we lost a lot of construction this winter due to weather, very cold, and the phase in will enable some of those projects to continue now that aren't getting started until late spring. So there's the importance of that phase in as well to existing development. But I guess in conclusion, our intent is to remain competitive with our neighboring municipalities, and the phase in allows us to do that.
Thank you. And just lastly, Mr Deputy Mayor, if I may, one of the indicators that this council has worked really hard on, at least in the eight years that I've been here, is moving and shifting the tax rates. Right now, we have a very high component of residential taxes paying for, and we need more industry, so we've been, all of these exemptions, everything that's been put forward by this council, has lured, helped us to bring significant industry to the area, and I don't have to cite all the examples, we know them all. This is just one more example of doing it in an appropriate and practical way. This is just one more example of doing it in an appropriate and practical way to phase it in, and it will assist us in bringing those jobs to the community, which is what we've been trying to do. So, I apologize to my colleagues for messing up at the GIC and not including it with it, but it is a valuable tool, and I would encourage my colleagues to support it, preferably unanimously. But, the reality is, we need to send a message to the business community that we are not unilaterally changing DCs, and not unilaterally making changes to our service fees without consulting with them, and without phasing them in so that they can properly budget for it.
So, I have councillor Whitehead first-time speaker on the amendment, then I'll go to councillor McCarty, second-time speaker, and then I'll go to a vote on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It certainly appears to have some validity. I guess my concern is I don't have the report, nor did I have the report before this council meeting, nor did I have this motion before the council meeting. Having said that, some of us could get in the way of moving forward, I'm not one of them, I will support what's before us. Thank you.
Councillor McCarty, please.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And I wonder if staff could, could help me, help us with, with some of the letters that we received, or the comments we received from the industrial stakeholders, asking for this, this phase in. We certainly received those in the case of the residential phase in, and, and the homebuilders were so good to, to appear before us, we had a chance to ask them questions and understand, at least for me, understand clearly the impact of the phase in in their case, and I supported the phase in in the case of residential. I didn't have that opportunity to speak to the industrial stakeholders, and I'm not talking about our staff, to be fair, I'm talking about the real estate business, or perhaps some large company which was poised to, to come here, who may be affected by this particular change.
Just looking to staff for an answer for you, sir?
Appreciate that.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. We don't have a formal correspondence from our industrial stakeholders with respect to the development charges, some informal conversations have taken place between those stakeholders and staff.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to check in on the, on the numbers on this, just one last time, the, the phase into $11.44 per square foot, what is the, what is, what is the overall cost of development? Understanding the Development Charges Act from the province only allows us to, to charge certain types of development charges, so it, by no stretch of the imagination does it cover 100% of the cost of development, that's a given, but what, what, what is the, the cost of development? What would the development charge be if, if we charged the full DC rate for industrial? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Mr. Zagerich, please.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it would be $18.77, similar to the non-industrial DCs, in case you have the report before you, it was reported on page fourteen of twenty-five of the report.
$18.77, and we're putting it up to $11.44, so there's about a, a $7 per square foot discount we've already built into our, our rate, and we're talking about the phase in here, which is costing us up to another $800,000 or so as a result of the phase in. Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'll finish by saying, we've had this discussion in past DC bylaws, and it's, this is not a, not the only way that industries decide to come to a municipality at the development charges, they also look at the, the value of land, and our land continues here in Hamilton to be fairly low-cost versus other municipalities. They look at the quality of, of housing, and, and the cost of housing for their employees, all the fantastic amenities we have in our city already, and all the other attributes of why it's fantastic for people to live and work in Hamilton. So, I, I'm just very concerned, given the lack of any letter from the stakeholders in comparison to the residential side, the industrial stakeholders, the fact that we're, this cost is up to $800,000 as a result of this phase in, and the fact that we're only going up to $11.44 per square foot, a full $7 per square foot discount already for industrial lands, I, I don't think this is supportable tonight.
Councillor Marula, please, and then I would like to go to the vote.
I just need to know, Mr. Deputy Mayor, bottom line is this, okay? If we're going to be amending anything, those that didn't show up to the actual meeting itself, they were notified, as did those that did attend as delegations, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I'm not quite sure why we would be in any way amending anything tonight, unless people have spoken behind closed doors, because at present, the only public delegations that we've received are being accommodated. Why would we be amending anything before us if people are now requesting it of us? At the end of the day, what's before us should stand, unless, of course, somebody has new information of, of people that fall within that category, that may have lobbied them outside of the public realm, but from my perspective, I'm satisfied with what's before us, and I respectfully request that we just move forward, and I'm asking for a standing in court of vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so just for my clarification, please, I've heard two figures of, I've heard 1142, and I've heard 1144. Could, could I please be insured of what the number is?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, at the time of the printing of the staff report that went to GIC was 1142, and I apologize, apologize if I've referenced 1142, the correct number is 1144.
Thank you very much. Yep. So, there's been a request for a standard recorded vote on the amendment, which has been properly moved and seconded. Councillor Pearson, you wanted to speak to the whole motion, not to the amendment. All those in favor? Myself, councillor Whitehead, sorry, you do it, Mayor. And the vote, please, Madam Clerk.
That carries, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Motion carries. Going on to the main motion as amended, councillor Pearson, you indicated you wish to speak to it.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, yes, thank you. My comments were first and foremost supporting this going forward, that I wanted to thank councillor Clark as the chair of the committee. I think this is the second term that he has chaired it, I know I chaired it many moons ago, and I said at the committee meeting, we've come a long way in, in, in cleaning up and making it, and simplifying it. I don't think development charges will ever be simplified, but we have cleaned it up and made it much more efficient in the process. I think this, this particular process entailed four meetings, and I certainly kudos again to councillor Clark and to all the staff that were involved in making sure that we had all the numbers and the information before us, and well in advance of the meeting so we could review it and be prepared. Thank you.
Anyone further on the motion? So, item five as amended, sorry, councillor Clark, please?
Yeah, I thought I'd ask to be put on the comment list when I spoke to the amendment.
Oh, sorry, you did.
So, first, I, I really do want to thank the members on the committee, councillor Pearson, councillor Johnson, councillor Partridge, as well as the citizen members, but more importantly, our staff. This was a complicated process, it was transparent, contrary to some of the comments that we've heard now in implications, everything was transparent, the meetings were public, we went through this process and explained everything, page by page by page. The development charge is, report that's before you, is probably one of the most important documents that we have for the city, because it's not, it just doesn't set a charge for the DCs, it actually sets a charge for, it actually sets in place our 20, 25-year capital plan. So, if you look at this, this report that we had, and everyone had an opportunity to see the, the volume of this report, every single project from a new development that's coming on stream in the next five years, in the next 25 years, and any construction that's occurring in the next five years, ends up with some component of a development charge. We also assessed, we also assessed the benefit to existing, which is another challenging component. We had many discussions with stakeholders, they argued strenuously that the benefit to existing should be higher, that they should be paying lower DCs because the benefit to the existing should be different. They're still arguing that on a number of, I think there's eight projects that we're still looking at, to find details on, and Adam has been instrumental in that with our staff, and, and the homebuilders tearing apart the projects line by line to understand exactly what the implications are for that project downstream and the benefit to the So, we went through a very long process. On the industrial side, again, I, I'm sorry that my colleagues are trying to, to make hay of something that is nothing to make hay of, because really, they're hurting the reputation of our staff, because it was in the staff report, the recommendation was there, it was an option for us to consider, and it was considered by the, the Development Charges Review Committee. So, it was very clear upfront, it was published, sorry, they didn't read it, but there were no backroom deals, no backroom meetings, none of the nonsense that's, that's being implied, and clearly, election fever has now hit the city of Hamilton. This development charge, we need to celebrate.
Okay, so, I'd like a little bit of civility and a little bit of non-knifing here, please.
I didn't knifed anyone.
Councillor, please take my direction.
I'm sorry, I didn't name anyone, and I just indicated comments were made across the floor. I have the right to defend the committee and, and the staff and the members that were participating in it, it was a transparent process, sir.
Continue, please.
Thank you very much. It was a transparent process. This is the first time that our staff can recall where the stakeholders on the committee, in the end, all agreed with the, the council and the staff on the new DC. That hasn't happened before. It just has not happened before. And that has happened not because of, of gifts to the community, that has happened because we tore about the projects page by page, and our staff can very clearly defend every single decision that we were made. And the numbers very clearly were defended based on the quantums that were being used and that were set in place by the Development Charges Act. So, there's no special treatment, there's no special favors, everything here follows the law, and everything here is 100% defensible. And I appreciate the efforts of Mr. Zagerich and his staff, and Mr. Scanlon, and all of those folks, because they're the ones that actually brought the numbers together, they're the ones that came up with all of the options for us, they're the ones that kept all of the staff, the committee members informed, and met with all the stakeholders to, to, in essence, advocate for these new changes, and in the end, we had agreement on it. So, I thank them all for that, and again, I, I would hope that they, my colleagues around the table would acknowledge that this is a, a good DC study, and the development charges that are being recommended are appropriate.
Councillor Marula, please.
I'm still, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm just a little bit baffled, just for clarity purposes. So, we have, we had a process, a public meeting, where we had development charges being debated. We, as we do on every issue, have delegation requests, delegations came forward and made an argument, but we didn't receive a delegation request from the industrial and commercial sector, is that correct? No, no one came forward?
According to staff, that's indeed the.
Okay, so, no one came forward, but they were notified of the changes, which to me suggests that they endorse the changes. So, I, I, that just raises a question from my perspective, I'm not suggesting that there's anything nefarious, but governance is based on inputs and outputs. If I don't have company A come to me and asks me, and ask me to do something for them, then why would I do that unless they've asked me? I'm just wondering, just correct me for one, I'm just wondering, why would we be changing the policy at this point if nobody has formally and publicly asked us to do it?
I'll take that as a rhetorical question, because we have changed, we have changed the policy. We just did it now.
But doesn't that raise concerns? I'm just, we, we've had, governance is all based on inputs and outputs, that, that's all I'm basically saying. So, I'm just wondering why around this table, suddenly, we have this output without any public input unless, obviously, there's been a private input? That, that's all I'm saying. So, I, I, at the end of the day, we'll allow the public to judge accordingly. Thank you.
Councillor Whitehead, please.
Thank you. I think we're debating the amendment again, but I, I think I heard, I think I heard staff clearly, or in this discussion, and believe me, I, I listened carefully, that the amendment was an option, an option that was identified in the report, that was put forward by staff. So, as they always do, if there's a number of amendments, it's one that you can consider and bring forward, that's what took place, so that's how it became for us, and that's why I'm supporting it, because obviously, staff supported it. Having said that, the question I have is, for the longest time in development charges, I don't know if this is Chair can answer this, or, or staff, but we, we've been told that because we had past practices in regards to what we considered meets the, the criteria for the development charges, that our, in the city of Hamilton was much more narrow than other jurisdictions because of past practice. Has that been reconciled now, or is, is what we can, what we can apply development charges on still more narrow than many other jurisdictions?
I, I believe in Mr. Scanlon's present slide presentation in that it very clearly defined as to what we're now allowed to render for, for DCs, and we are optimizing every category possible to us in order to, to, I'm going to say appropriately and legally levy the DCs on those particular categories. Am I wrong? That's my recollection from the PowerPoint presentation by Mr. Scanlon, Mr. Zagerich?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that's correct. In terms of our practices, we are utilizing best practices across what other jurisdictions are employing as it relates to their development charges and the regulations and limitations of the Development Charge Act.
Okay, so one of the examples I want to cite is the, clearly, when you have huge growth, there's greater demands on services, and that's what, you know, development charge is all about, growth-related projects. So, you can have a project in, in an old part of, of the city that you need to expand to accommodate the greater usage or utilization based on that growth. My understanding that you couldn't utilize the development charges for the expansion of a pre-existing facility, is that correct?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I didn't hear the complete question.
It's my understanding that you couldn't use development charges to expand pre-existing recreation centers to meet the growing demand as a result of the growth.
Scanlon is anxious to answer this, this question.
Quite quickly, you can expand existing facilities, if you're needing to do more programming, accommodate more people, an existing facility can be expanded, whether it be an arena, community center, fire station, et cetera.
Okay, so this is part of the broadening of the scope, because I know that I've tried in the past and told we couldn't do it, so I'm happy about that. I guess my next question is, is there any category that we didn't optimize relative to development charges that other communities are that we are not?
The brain trust is at work, sir.
You, Mr. Chair, you have pretty well utilized everything that you are able to. There's one or two minor services that are never very significant, something such as childcare, they're nominal, as if you go through the calculations, the relationships, there's grant funding, et cetera, so they become, and only a handful of municipalities across the province actually utilize it. So, I'd say you're probably 99.9% utilization.
Okay, so now it begs the question, understanding our needs in regards to childcare, why it's a category that's available to us, that we didn't exercise it in this report?
It's a function of a variety of different ways how you deploy the service, whether you purchase the spaces, or whether you construct the spaces yourself, so it's going through that process, there wasn't a significant new municipal facilities that were identified for, for that service.
Okay, can I ask somebody, is there anyone? Okay, can I ask, is there anyone here representing social services that may have some knowledge about our social service challenges in regards to childcare?
Time to get somebody, Counselor?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I just want to remind committee, we only have one facility, one city facility, and so for the most part, we provide funding through other agencies as it relates to childcare. And again, as Mr. Scanlon identified, staff did not identify any capital requirements for city, further city assets as it relates to childcare in the future.
Ms. Prue, did you, did you hear the discussion?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't, Mr. Chair.
So, Joanne, understanding our childcare needs in this community is not adequate. We've had reports that clearly indicate that we were not meeting the demand in this community. I just heard from our treasurer that we only have one facility. Understanding that we could have a category in development charges that generates some capital towards future facilities, what input did your department have on the relevance of that particular category and whether or not we should optimize development charges for that category?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I wasn't involved in the consultation from the community and emergency services perspective. I think at the time the consultation was going on, I was in planning and economic development. That being said, the issue with the childcare waitlist isn't due to the number of facilities being available or the number of spaces, it's actually a shortage of money that we have in terms of offering subsidies to people that need childcare. Is what causes the waitlist issues.
Maybe I should ask this the other way. If you had a capital that was available to you through development charges, understanding that often we provide grants for facilities, for example, to deal with capital needs, lifecycle cost, those kinds of things, the question clearly becomes, have we done a cost-benefit analysis to determine if there's a benefit? My problem is that we need to optimize and stretch that net out as far and wide as practical, do the cost-benefit analysis and determine if this is a category that we are quite prepared very comfortably to exclude from the development charges process. What I'm hearing is we really haven't cast that net and have that, and have done that feasibility study to determine if that's a category that we should be generating dollars to meet a demand and need in this community.
I think the E and CS would be looking forward to having your motion and ask them to do that, to do that work.
Okay, we'll do that at the emergency community services, I'll make that request. The next one's five years? So we can't do anything this term, we lose the window this term, so any money possibly could be generated will be lost. What's the timeline for, once it's approved tonight?
Eleven days.
It's eleven days?
Yes, sir, July the 5th is when it needs to be tabled.
Okay, there's no way we can have the-- So I think there's an opportunity lost, but I will ask staff to certainly prepare, have that researched well in advance of the next review to ensure that we're optimizing capital dollars for any programs in the city of Hamilton.
And I believe Mr. Zagaric made a note of it right now.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we can provide that information, and I just want to recognize, I appreciate the wanting to realize all the revenue potential, but I will remind committee, the one constraint under the Development Charge Act is our service level standard. So the city has one facility, and so as much as the objective may be to realize as much revenue sources outside of the levy as possible, the potential may be limited, given that we only have one facility. But again, I understand the objective.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McCady?
Thanks very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to thank Counselor Clark and the committee for their work on the development charges. I sat on a previous development charge committee, and I can tell you, it's an awful lot of work, and it, there's no sense that it's getting any easier as development continues to occur in such an expansive way in Hamilton. We're doing really well these days, and it means more work for the committee, no question about it. So I just wanted to provide thanks, although we've obviously disagreed on the industrial discussion a moment ago. I remain supportive and happy with the work that the committee did, Counselor Clark and as committee members, thank you.
Counselor Clark, and then I'm going to the motion.
I just want to make sure that everyone around the table is aware that in order for us to include capital projects, they have to have been planned. There has to be the documents to defend that we're moving forward. We can't charge DCs for something that's not on the books and ready to move forward. So they did populate it through all of the departments to try and grasp and capture everything, and we, we're very thorough in that regard. So I appreciate what Counselor Whitehead is asking, we asked very similar questions, but without, without it being, without being able to defend the additional DC, we would have lost it on an appeal. So everything that's in the document is defensible, and we have all of the documentation files to support it if, and any developer decides to appeal.
Item five as amended, all those in favor. Who is--
I just want to be recorded as opposed only because I can't appreciate or understand why--
I'll come to you when I say opposed, okay?
Yes, please. Standing recorded vote, actually.
Okay, standard recorded vote, all those in favor of-- Yes, Counselor?
I just would like Mr. Zagaric to clarify, did I write this and present this, or was this provided to me to present today?
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, staff provided that it's, again, aligned to the alternative two in the staff report. We provided two alternatives, and again, at committee, staff had identified those two alternatives, and again, staff were just putting it forward as it formed the second part of the alternatives that committee considered and approved, the first part being the residential.
Thank you.
Counselor McCady, and then I am going to the standard recording vote.
Appreciate your patience, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just a clarity on the standing recorded vote, I'm only going to be opposed to item E, that was the item we discussed a moment ago, and so what are your instructions in terms of the standing recorded vote?
My instructions, well, the request is, the instructions from Counselor Marula is a stand-in recorded vote on item five A as amended. You can indicate right now to the clerk if you have opposition to any parts of it, then we will go to the standing recorded vote on the whole issue. So Counselor?
So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I would be opposed to item E, that's the industrial development charges.
Okay, is there any other members? So indicate, Counselor Duval, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Collins, Counselor Marula, and that's it in opposition to item E?
Just, Mr. Deputy Mayor, just to clarify, my, the crux of my issue at this point is I'm not sure why we are acting on behalf of a non-request from a public perspective. That is alarming to me. So if no one's asked us to do anything publicly, I'm not sure why we're doing it for them. Okay. Even more, okay, even more, okay.
So the subsections have been noted as the opposition on a request for a standing recorded vote on item five as amended, exclusive of what you've indicated your opposition, all those in favor?
Deputy Mayor Powers, Counselors Whitehead, Duval, Jackson, Collins, Morrow, Farr, McCady, Clark, Pearson, Johnson, Pasuda, Partridge, and Mayor Britina.
Opposed? The honorable member from Ward--
Counselor Marula.
For. The motion is carried. Going to page six of 20, ladies and gentlemen, item six. Seven. Counselor Collins, please, item seven.
Yes, I just want to clarify because there are a lot of moving parts. This is the Civic Gateway Study, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I know that this is a recommendation that it be received, but in terms of the current status of this project, we started out with a presentation that was made to committee, and there was a vote on that, and my vote, as you know, was opposed, and it was for the reasons of budget, and there was a cost associated with that, it was well over $200,000, and I'd like to know right now, what's the status of the budget attached to the Civic Gateway Project? Are you to finance, if I could?
I'm just-- Sorry, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I wasn't at the GIC. The report identifies the cost at $230,000 and identifies two funding sources, the Council Strategic Capital Projects Reserve at $190,000, and from accounts 8090149100, in the amount of $40,000 to arrive at the total $230,000. I apologize, I wasn't at that GIC, so--
So formally, so formally, those are still the numbers that are on the books?
And they're subject to change?
Yes, sir.
Based on the direction that was provided?
Correct, and based what's contained in the report.
Okay, if you could record me as opposed again to the receipt of the report, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Counselor McCady, please.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and this item, you're quite right in terms of the dollar amounts today, but very clear direction from committee that we weren't on for those numbers, and that we've asked staff to go away and investigate other possibilities, and if you recall the discussion in committee, they're certainly doing that. I forget the gentleman's name who's got the lead on that, maybe I'll ask Chris Murray to maybe summarize the updated version. It's been almost a week since committee, so I'm hoping that there's even more good news. They're looking at crowdfunding, they're looking at in-kind contributions, Laura Babcock was weighing in with contributions on her end, and she's been rallying the troops on, on social media and watching that as well, so maybe an update from Chris. And just before I hand that over, on page 16 of 20 in our minutes, part E was that staff be directed to continue to report back on the cost of the Gateway Project, and that was, of course, our primary concern.
Murray, please.
Through you, Deputy Mayor, so one of the first things I did was meet with staff just to understand the specifics of the cost, and so what we're doing right now is working with the Ministry of Transportation to be clear on the location, the sign and the related costs have established a sign in that, in that spot as well. You know, there is an opportunity to talk to organizations in this community that may have an interest in assisting with any kind of offset on the cost of this. So we're traveling right now on two streams, as I say. First stream is MTO to try and limit any financial costs that may be associated with MTO expectations or needs, and secondly, to look at, as I say, major organizations in this community that may have an interest in participating.
Well, thanks for that, Chris, and Deputy Mayor, I think there's lots of opportunities to reduce the cost, and in fact, it has to be reduced. It's very clear around this table, this horseshoe, that that's the direction from, from this group.
Counselor Marula, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and let me, let me just emphasize a couple of things that is before us presently, and I think Counselor McCady's situation is clearly one that brought forward an item, but I, I do need to emphasize through you, could Chris Murray just explain what the benefits to the city basically is according to this particular sign? Because I need to know from a tangible perspective what really the impact will be from a tangible perspective.
Murray, would you like to weigh in on this, please?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, not especially, but I'll give it my best shot. The, I believe the rationale for having the signage was well documented in the Public Works Report that had been submitted some time ago on this, so, and I think the reason why we're, so, I mean, you know, the idea of having a formal identifier of the city of Hamilton for anyone coming into the community, I think the benefit of that is, is, I think, obvious. I mean, it's a way to brand us, it's certainly a way to, you know, to spell out to anyone visiting Hamilton, the pride that we have in our community, and to say it clearly to people along the roadside as they enter our community and exit. The, and I think the other part of this discussion, as I listened to it and understood it, was, you know, the timing of this obviously relates to, the world's coming to Hamilton next year, and we, we wanted to, you know, put on our Sunday best, so to speak, to demonstrate that we're, we're proud to welcome them to Hamilton, and this is one symbol that we can utilize to do that. And then the 403 has been identified as a key road for access into our community, and that's why we're focusing on trying to put the sign beside the highway in that part of Hamilton. So, I mean, the benefit is, you know, it's a way in which we can show civic pride, the location is strategic in terms of Gateway into Hamilton, and the timing is important, certainly from welcoming the world to us next year when we have the Pan Am Games. Hopefully that answers your question.
And I believe that Mr. Murray believes what he, what he said is the best thing to the city, but I have to beg to differ only because we, folks, we have to look at this from a practicality standpoint. When I, and it's ironic that both Counselor Collins and I brought this initiative forward. It was originally discussed back in 2001, yeah, at that time balked based on the fact of the cost. It's now been reinvented or resurrected, and we are now in a situation where we're willing to spend $230,000 on a sign in an area that has, from my perspective, a natural beauty that in itself speaks volumes about the fact that Hamilton is a beautiful place. Not to mention the fact there is already a sign about a kilometer away from that particular location which reads "Hamilton" that's presently there. So now this is just going to duplicate the fact, because I know at last meeting, somebody said, well, it's going to just emphasize the fact that people have entered Hamilton. Well, folks, if people don't know where they're headed, then I'm not quite sure we want to even enlighten them, frankly. It really is mind-boggling that we're spending $230,000 on a sign when we have potholes the size of that sign that should be filled. So let's focus on, on, on what we need to do rather than what some people want to do, because what we, some people want to do is frankly irresponsible, and I can never support it, and I thank you, sir, for your time.
You're more than welcome, sir. Counselor Farr, please.
So my understanding of what's before us tonight and what was heavily debated not once but twice in the last month and a half is 230 big reasons to delay it some more. It's the cost. We're trying to, as presented by our city manager tonight and others on staff and in the community for certain in the past, and still today, and growing stronger, is evoke some sense of pride and some sense of welcome, basically, as originally concocted, as alluded to by our previous speaker some years ago. We're finishing the job, at least as it relates to one of four locations, as it relates to gateways for a big Canadian city like ours, and knowing we have engaged since these two debates, a growing interest in the community in addressing the 230K that was before us and remains before us to some extent, this engaged community led by some citizens who have graciously given up their time in volunteering to organize at the 1,000 or above commitment or 1,000 or below commitment, and utilizing what we really didn't have about a decade ago, which is the ability through crowdfunding and social media to reach out and reach out in an expeditious fashion. So in addition to that, conversations continue with our staff and with those engaged in the community, with business leaders and industrial people who are willing to step up and offer their services in kind. I still feel quite confidently, as I stated in GIC, that this gateway is important to our city, to our identity, to our pride. There are many who feel the same way, I'm certain of that. This is the right location, the 403 welcoming on the official route all those guests for our Pan Am Games and other Juno Awards and everything else that happens in 2015, and I appreciate that, and I have been involved and watched very closely and talked to our community leaders. Watched very closely as this evolves and that number 230 gets whittled down and hopefully receiving what we have here tonight in item seven on the Civic Gateway Study. It's a much less number and will require much less of a debate and make it for us around this often frugal body, and prudently so, a much easier decision.
Counselor Whitehead, please.
Thank you. Chair, I mean, there's two issues here, and I'm not sure when some of the speakers speak against it. Is it because they just don't like the fact that somebody else suggested a great idea? Or is it because of cost? Because if it's a cost, then let's separate that issue. If it's a sign, then, then, you know, then I have a problem, because when you go across this country, you go across this province, you arrive at communities of 3, 4,000, they engage the community, and they are proud of their Paul Bunyan and Blind River, they're proud of their goose-- proud of their goose in Wawa, they're proud of their Adam and Elliot Lake. I mean, the reality is that these gateways were a sense of pride and sense of involvement by the communities in regards to the entry in the gateway. I didn't interrupt anyone.
Counselor, please.
At least I don't remember doing that. So my point is, the point is, is that we're a community of five hundred thousand. Burlington has a gateway sign, Woodstock has a gateway sign, ninety-nine percent of the communities. Is it that we're brighter than them? Is that what it is? No, it's called branding. Branding's an important thing, and it's about a sense of pride over your community. When you talk about such a little cost relative to such a big organization and a beautiful community, why would you not want to make that investment and hang it proud? People hang shingles on their doorsteps and their schools and so forth, telling who they are. But we want to sort of scurry and just have people sort of pass this by and maybe catch a little green sign on the side of the road saying "Hamilton," when no one else does that. So, you know, I kind of find it kind of chintzy, quite frankly, and I understand we've got potholes. I understand we have other infrastructure investments need to be made, but you can't be a Mickey Mouse operation either. So at some point, you have to make, you have to make investments. You have to understand the branding. You have to understand the strategic location of what his staff is putting forward, and you have to take a sense of pride. I would suggest you go out to the community...
Ladies and gentlemen, please order...
There's two issues here. I'm right now not arguing on money, because I think money is an argument we can have. Right now, I'm arguing on, is there a need to have a branding and a sign? So that's what I'm focusing on right now. If one wants to spend on the dollars, let them spend until their tires go raw. But the reality is, I'm focusing on, is it a good idea to have branding and have a sign? I think it's a great idea. Now, is there other ways to mitigate those costs? Now, that's a separate argument. And I'm prepared to have that discussion, and I'm prepared to give time to see through crowd raising and sponsorships if, in fact, we could avoid the cost altogether, if that's the concern of some of the constituents or certainly some of the councillors around this table. I'm quite prepared to build towards seeing if we can provide a fund to do this without going to the levy, going to capital, period. So if you take that argument away, that it's not a money issue because the condition is we raise the money, then the question is, are we still against branding and having a sign? I'm certainly supportive of the sign, and I'm certainly supportive of looking at ways to look for sponsorships and crowdfunding to establish a sign, and I think it's prudent, and I think the time has come. Thank you.
Counselor Partridge, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and I've been consistently opposed to spending two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for one sign. If it's four signs, it's going to be closer to nine hundred thousand. I am not opposed to the idea of branding or promoting this wonderful city that we live in, because that's exactly what we should be doing, but I would like to be recorded as opposed, please.
Mayor Morrell, please. Sorry. Freudian slip. Mayor Bertina, please. Counselor Clark.
I just want to be clear, we are just moving or voting to receive the report and staff continue to do what they're doing? Okay. Maybe they could come back with some information on branding, because a sign isn't branding. Branding is, what is Hamilton known for? How are we promoting Hamilton? That's the brand, and a sign is not a brand. So let's be clear, the sign's not branding.
Item Seven.
Eric, all the way.
All those in favor? Wow.
All opposed.
Counselors Collins and Marula and Counselor Partridge. Okay. Item Eight.
All opposed.
Nine.
All opposed.
Ten.
All opposed.
Eleven.
All opposed.
Twelve.
All opposed.
Thirteen.
All opposed.
Fourteen.
All opposed.
Fourteen, okay. Mayor Bertina may have, please have a motion on the report. Counselor Duvall, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just on six point three, the beginning, the page one, just for correction, it's got me down as vacation in the attendance, but if you look right through, I've been, I was there for voting, so I was not on vacation.
Okay.
Just for correction.
Okay. So noted. Mayor Bertina may please have a motion on the report as amended.
I self seconded by Counselor Judy Partridge that the twelfth report of the General Issues Committee be adopted as amended. Any information section received.
All those in favor?
All opposed.
Opposed, the motion is carried. The Audit Finance Administration Committee presents its fifth report for 2014, respectfully recommends Item One.
All opposed.
Two.
All opposed.
Three.
All opposed.
Four.
All opposed.
Five.
All opposed.
Six.
All opposed.
Seven.
All opposed.
Eight.
All opposed.
Nine.
All opposed.
Ten.
All opposed.
Eleven. Counselor?
Just on eleven, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that was an initiative that I brought forward with respect to the one-time ice storm assistance program from the...
No, Item Eleven is the Horizon Utilities.
Sorry, on Item Twelve then, on Item Twelve, sorry.
Okay. Item Eleven?
All opposed.
Twelve. Counselor Marula.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. On Item Twelve is the initiative that I brought forward regarding the one-time ice storm assistance from the province. Clearly, the province has rejected our claim. It's unfortunate, as you know...
No, they have not, Counselor. No.
Well, I'm hearing that they have, but if you allow me to finish. At this point, clearly what's before us is basically a non-answer because they're in the middle of a...
Point of order, this is not correct. Could we have a comment from staff? This is...
We are in the middle of a campaign, hence they cannot give us a formal response. Clearly, throughout the Queen's Park, as Counselor Clark can concur to or attest to, is that once an election is called, everything is on hold. So as a direct result, any request that has been made is basically to the sidebar. So what we have before us is simply a very pleasant way of rejecting the city's claims. Now, if somebody's willing to come forward and suggest that I'm wrong and that they are going to come forward with that storm relief, so be it, formally and on record, but I can attest to you today that that is not going to be the case, and I've been told by a very reliable source. Now, if somebody has contrary information, so be it, but I will stand by what I've received from a very reliable source, and I just want somebody to come forward and please enlighten me so that perhaps we can move forward. But at this point, I've been told clearly that this city has been rejected based on the request that I made. Thank you.
So let me just help with the motion. The two parts of the motion is a process that has been initiated by the Minister of Municipal Affairs. No minister, no matter who the occupant is, has any... This is a protocol that all the municipalities, impacted municipalities, have been asked to follow. Therefore, the motion that's here is that the mayor expresses on our behalf an expression of interest under what they're now deeming to be eligible for funds. So all this is, is we are making application based on the rules of engagement that have been provided to us.
And I'm telling you that my sources, a very reliable one, that has clearly stated that we're going to be rejected.
This is nonsense, Mr. Chair.
So at the end of the day, unless the mayor has something to enlighten us publicly on, then I will stand corrected. Until then, I think he's being, he should be ruled out of order. I appreciate your time.
Mr. Zegarik, would you like to just help us now, unless there's something brand new that's been brought to our attention? Certainly, what you and your staff brought to us with regards to, I'm going to call it, the protocol for making application is what triggered this motion.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. As Counselor Powers identified, the report that was presented at AFNA, there are two parts to the report. One was to provide the mayor the authority to submit an expression of interest under the ice storm assistance program. And I'll just remind committee that on February twenty-six, two thousand and fourteen, the provincial government of Ontario announced a one-time storm assistance program to help severely affected municipalities and conservation authorities to cover extraordinary costs that were incurred as a result of the ice storm event on December twenty-first and twenty-second of two thousand and thirteen. The second part of that report sought the authority, delegated authority for the general manager of finance and corporate services to submit all claims to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing under the program. The deadline for claims is October thirty-first, and therefore, staff were seeking the authority to submit all the claims under this program. And as part of that report, there was an attachment from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing directly from the office of the deputy minister identifying the requirements for the expression of interest and the deadlines for the program and reconfirming the program.
So in essence, I stand by my comments that we have been rejected, and when the time comes and it's been publicly stated, I'll accept apologies at that point. Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Mayor Bertina, and then Counselor Clark, please.
We continue, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to follow the processes outlined. The counselor may be misled by a story regarding the replacement of trees. There is categories within the document from the province, what is acceptable in terms of what will be considered, but the statements that we just heard are of no use to this group.
Except they're factual, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and I'm not an apologist for the province. Unfortunately, the mayor is. Unfortunately, the mayor is, and I'll stand by the residents of the city as opposed to the province and the leaders accordingly.
Thank you. Counselor Clark, Counselor Whitehead, please.
Thank you very much. So I was under the impression from staff that the document came from the deputy minister's office requesting us to provide the information and file our claims. Is that... Am I correct in that, or...
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. On May twenty-ninth, the office of the deputy minister of municipal affairs and housing identified the process. You may recall, committee may recall, the original timelines of the process at a preliminary claim submission date of October thirty-first. A number of municipalities identified that we were still undertaking some actions to mitigate the effect of the ice storm and needed an extension, and the province responded and extended the claims deadline to October thirty-first of this year as well. Through that correspondence, as the mayor identified, there was some additional preliminary information with respect to eligible costs and ineligible costs, and staff will be following up with, city staff will be following up with staff administered municipal affairs and housing to better understand those categories. But we have identified some preliminary estimates as to the city costs, and those were reported at AFNA at approximately eleven point three million dollars.
And if we had funding for the replacement of the trees or the canopy that have been lost, our claim was closer to nineteen million?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, our original estimate, the staff's original estimate, using the same methodology as other municipalities who were affected, who captured the costs related, if you were to replace the canopy of a mature tree, that was closer to nineteen million dollars. So we revised, based on continued consultation across our departments, what our cost estimates are, and again, approximately eleven point three million dollars. But the costs related to forestry, horticulture, those costs, and winter maintenance, those costs represent the majority of those costs at approximately seven million dollars of that eleven point three million.
And the province's staff are indicating that they're not refunding the conservation authority losses? Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, there is a separate program for conservation authorities. So this council, at the time when we were discussing ODRAP as a program and the limitations of ODRAP, and when we were identifying all the parties, city parties, that were affected, including the city, Horizon Utilities, and the Conservation Authority, this council requested consideration for the Council Conservation Authority. The province did announce through this program that it is municipalities that will be eligible, and conservation authorities are eligible under a separate program.
And it's my understanding that the large urban mayors have objected to the withdrawal of the canopy funding? And just get clarification from the mayor, if I can?
Just to repeat that, Counselor?
The, my understanding is that the large urban mayors have objected to the province's unilateral withdrawing the canopy costs, indicating that we should be reimbursed for the canopy loss?
Well, our position was that...
To replace it?
Yeah.
Okay. So Counselor Marula is one hundred percent correct that once the writ is dropped, the government cannot spend any new money that has not been approved by a budget. And my understanding is this amount of money, the hundred and fifty-nine million across all the municipalities, was already included in their approved spending, so the deputy minister does still have the authority to activate and authorize the program and follow through with payments. Even if the government isn't installed until December, the deputy minister could still issue the checks during that time. What happens after the election? I have no idea what's going to happen, but right now, it's still a legitimate process, and we should be following through on it, and hopefully, they're going to send the checks.
Counselor Whitehead, please.
Clarification, I'm not clear whether those dollars were passed to the Treasury Board, so that may be, that's the question you'd ask. Do we know for a fact that the hundred and thirty million that was announced? Because we hear province is announcing, announcing, announcing numbers, and then when you dig deeper, you find out that it hasn't gone through the due process. So do we know, in fact, that we know the program was established, we know the hundred and thirty million dollars was announced, do we know that before the lit, writ was dropped, that it had passed through the Treasury Board?
Through you, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. We can follow up with Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, but I can't confirm that at this point. I can confirm that the funding was committed and the program was established as a one-time program.
Okay. Well, it'd be an interesting question to ask. More importantly, and I think we've been beating around it, and I think it's great to see that the big mayors have taken a position. But this program didn't exist. This is a new program. Is that correct?
Indeed, it is. There was an ODRAP program. It was us that actually triggered this new initiative, which Mayor Bertina brought to Lumco, which there was a buy-in from those affected municipalities. So it's a new creative thing that was started here in the city of Hamilton and had uptake by our, by our other like-impacted municipalities.
Now, in the development of this strategy, did they consult the communities in respect to the different categories that would qualify? So the concern I have, again, is, was it five million plus in regards to the canopy replacement? If we're acknowledging that this is a new policy, a new program based on what we just heard, clearly, they were on the fly in regards to developing the criteria and what would be covered. I'm trying to understand what role the municipality had in the development of those, that criteria and those policies.
Mayor Bertina, would you like to share?
Yeah, I think I can help. We fermented all of the extra costs over and above what we would normally expect and looked at all of those costs, including power issues, you know, through Horizon Utilities and so on. So we, we said, this is what it cost us under these different categories, including the tree coverage, so... Appreciate that. And the last question I have is, what is the explanation if there's a significant cost as a result of a unique, you know, a unique storm? When the ice storm hit Quebec, it was federal and provincial and municipal help right across the country for Quebec. I'm trying to understand, in Ontario, there's a number of communities got hit hard with this ice storm, and all of a sudden, a key component, which is encouraged by the province of Ontario, is the tree canopy. Why that would not qualify under this particular program? So was there an explanation given and why they arrived at the conclusion that that would not qualify?
In short, no, it was just, it was a decision made that it was not to be included in it. Maybe it was, maybe it was the, I'm going to call it, the aggregate on the, on the costs from all the municipalities, but certainly, I was in attendance at the meeting where Mayor Bertina had the lead on this particular file. It was a shopping list, as you can anticipate from all the communities, every possible thing that might have been impacted, whether it's channelization impacts, power, you know, power outages with regards to their dam operations. So, I mean, the shopping list was very extensive, and then ultimately, through the deliberations, they narrowed the list down to, I'm going to call it, common impacts and provided that list in their resolution.
Okay, so I just wanted to highlight that issue because I think it's really important to us, and it's important that we continue to fight on the canopy piece. And I just want to remind my colleagues and certainly the viewers that we contribute significant taxes to other levels of government. Two point eight billion dollars, according to Cat's Canada, a number of years ago, is contributed by the city of Hamilton. Two point eight billion. $2.8 billion. And a year. And the amount that we get in return in regards to services, eight cents on the dollar from the other levels of government. So maybe we need to remind the government that if there are true partners with the municipalities, at eight cents on the dollar in return in services from those levels of government, they have a responsibility to municipalities ensure, when these kinds of situations happen, that they are true of partner to ensure that they address all the losses and the impacts on communities. Thank you.
Counsel Marula, and then I'd like to go to the vote.
Just a point of clarification. This I brought forward on January 13th, 2014, a disaster relief financial assistance request funded December 22nd, 2013 ice storm, which was approved unanimously for the exception of two absentees on this council. I'm not quite sure how what Mayor Bertina may have done subsequent to that would be tied into this. But just for a point of clarity, it was a motion that this council supported that I brought forward on January 13th, 2014. We wouldn't want to mislead...we would never want to mislead the public. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Bertina, please.
Yes, I'm not sure that the federal assistance in the Quebec ice storm involved tree canopy. There were so many huge infrastructure issues, most especially, you know, the electrical supply. I checked that, but I'm not sure that a tree...the tree canopy fell under the federal assistance that was provided at that time. Those are my comments.
Item 12. 13. 14. 15. 16. 17. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, just on item 17, 17A, I'm hoping my colleagues would agree that we would put a timeframe in place for our staff to come back with recommendations on how we actually provide access to the actual invoices that are being spent. Currently, the way the program is set up is we're just doing the total allocations that are being spent on a monthly basis. And the intent of proactive disclosure is to allow people to actually see invoices for the expenditures. So if I could move an amendment that will have staff report back on the costs of implementing that in the new year, I would suggest that it would be appropriately set up in 2015. That should give us enough time to actually figure out the mechanics of it and the costs, if I can get a second.
So I'd like to treat that as a section D. Correct.
I'm in your hands, sir.
Run III, one of the other ones.
Yep.
Okay. So it's properly moved and seconded a discussion on it. Counsel Pearson?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, thank you. Can I ask through you if we can ask Mr. Ziegler just to clarify the process? Because I don't think it was funding. I think it's the manpower and timing of putting...of moving this forward. And that was what was discussed in committee.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. We will report back in terms of roles, responsibilities. There may be a funding request. I'm not certain at this time. The scanning of those images will have to be retrieved and placed into the website. And so let me just look at the proper warehoused and indexed images retrieved into the website. And so that will require some technology to do so. So not that I expect it to be significant, but we will report back in terms of the timing as well as the resources and roles and responsibilities to achieve that objective.
So a target is being proposed by Counselor Clark. Obviously, there'll be ongoing non reporting back to governance, but back to the Web Redevelopment Committee, which is part of this too. So on the amendment, all those in favor, oppose, the motion. On the item 17 as amended, all those in favor, oppose, the motion's carried. Item 18. 19. 20. 21. 22. Counselor Clark, may I please have a motion on the report, please, as amended?
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Pearson, that the fifth report of the Audit Finance Administration Committee be adopted as amended and the information section received.
All those in favor, oppose, the motion's carried. Next item is the Emergency and Community Services Committee. The Emergency and Community Services Committee presents its report 14-004 and respectfully recommends, first off, item 1, the...no, the title is incorrect. Rather than 2012, 2015, early word, early years, community planning implementation strategy, it should say field renovations on adjacent lands, wards 7 and 9. So it's the wrong title affixed to the motion. So could I have a motion to amend the title? Seconded by Counsel McCady, all those in favor, carried on item 1 as amended, all those in favor? Oppose, the motion's carried. Item 2. Thank you, Sam. Item 3. 4. 5. 6. 7. 8. 9. 10. Oh, there is no 10. Just a second, please. Direction on 10, please. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, Counsel Whitehead has a motion to lift the item. It is in the information section that the item would come before counsel.
So you'd like to lift the item from the information section and introduce it as a motion?
Correct. There was, Mr. Chair, there was the...some clarification that was needed at emergency services, so we held off until I could sit down with staff and get that clarification. We have now received is regarding area rating, dollars from Ward 8, that's going into its state-of-the-art track, that's around McNab School, community track going at school and field renovations. There was a number issue. We wanted to make sure that the numbers were correct. They are now in the motion. So I guess I'd be moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Deville, to lift the information.
Yep. On the motion to lift the item from information, all those in favor, oppose, the motion's carried.
And then item 10, as put in front of everybody, moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Deville.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay. On the motion, all those in favor, oppose, the motion's carried. And I got 10 tens and tens. Counsel Farr, may I please have a motion on the report as amended?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Moro, that the fourth report of Emergency and Community Services Committee be adopted as amended and the information section received.
And that's it for committee report. All in favor, oppose, the motion's carried. Thank you.
Counsel Powers, I have a note that I'm asking you for a motion to rise and report, but it's typically not in your hands. Does anyone else have a motion to rise and report? Because otherwise, we sit here all night.
Motion by Counsel Call, but seconded by...
All in favor.
Do we stand adjourned? No, we're on motion. All those in favor, oppose, the motion's carried. Thank you.
Now, Counsel onto motions. And Counsel McCady, you have a motion?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I do, it's moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Farr. And it's one of these special occasion permit motions we see from time to time. This one has to do with the annual Labor Day picnic in Dundurn Park. And it reads as follows. A, that the city of Hamilton hereby deems the annual Labor Day picnic being held at the Dundurn National Historic Site on York Boulevard on September 1st, 2014, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, as municipally significant. And part B, that the applicant be provided a copy of this resolution for inclusion with the application to the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario.
Okay. You have seconded, all in favor? Thank you. Counselor Powers, a motion on the Audit Committee.
This is a motion with regards to the Audit Committee under the Municipal Elections Act. You have the motion before. It was prescribed under the legislation for constitution of a compliance audit committee for 2014 and gives permission for the clerk to advertise for citizens to serve on the committee.
Okay.
Seconded by Counsel Johnson, please.
All in favor. Counsel McCady, another motion? Canis Street Bidirectional Cycle Track?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. It's moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Farr. And it refers to item 11 of the GIC report 14-007. We're expecting the Canis Street Bidirectional Cycle Track Pilot Project. And that was approved by council on March 26, 2014, as it was amended at that point. And this is...this motion is to further amend by adding the following as subsection E. And the subsection E would read as follows. That public work staff be directed to undertake a communications plan regarding the Canis Street Bidirectional Cycle Track Pilot Project in consultation with the ward counselors at an estimated cost of $25,000 to be funded from the cycling infrastructure account.
Okay. And any comments, all in favor?
Carry.
I just need some clarification, Mr. Chair. And I know that this has passed, but I didn't know what the criteria was in regards to accessing money that's generated from the red light camera project reserve. So apparently, now we got special pet projects that are being funded out of the red light reserve. So can I understand what is the criteria on that reserve?
Counselor Clark?
Sir Mayor, just on the motion...
Hang on, I got the floor, do I not? Okay.
I thought the question was on the motion. It's not on the motion. It's on...got to go back to March 26, 2014 to have that discussion.
It's right here. I underlined it. I'm asking a question for clarification.
Right here. Is someone on staff who's willing to provide some clarity on the red light?
...of you as possible. I want to stress two things. One, there's been a misrepresentation of this as being simply a negotiation with the school board. And that's not true. We're talking about the various components of Scott Park. If council has a priority, I would think it'd be the senior center, named after the late Counselor Bernie Morelli. It was unanimous decision to go ahead with that and unanimous on the naming. And I think if there's anything that the others would be subservient to, it would be that, in terms of location and precedence and importance in our mind. For many, the Jimmy Thompson Pool is important. It hearkens back to the British Empire Games in 1930. And many want it retained and designated. I'm in that category as well. We have parking needs that we're aware of for the Pan Am Games and Tiger Cats and other uses. That's all important as well. And of course, the school board owns property there. So all these are different parts of that park that we should be dealing with in a coordinated fashion. There's nothing subservient, for example, to the building of the school, in my mind. And I want to stress that. I'm looking at each situation based on its own importance. And I think it's important for the city to have a coordinated view of this very important block. I think you're aware, Mr. Mayor, that from the previous stadium committee meeting, that we have some time constraints when it comes to parking requirements. I know in the neighborhood, there's a desire for adequate open space and beautification of the whole block. So I'm looking forward to using the considerable talents of the city manager in pulling something together here. There are some people doing some excellent work in a variety of different ways on different fronts. And I think it has to be coordinated on our behalf and then information brought back to the appropriate committees of this council and funneled through according to the proper process. So I commend this to you. I do feel strongly about it as the ward representative. I think it's time to pull it together, if at all possible. And I would ask for your support, first and foremost, on behalf of the good people of Ward 3. And I think something that can be very good for all of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just to assist, we do have mature files underway with Bernie Morelli, senior center, Jimmy Thompson Pool. But I'll go to our questioners, Counsel Johnson, Counsel Powers, Counsel Jackson, and Counsel Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I really appreciate the ward counselors' intent on here. But I do have some questions before I go through you, Mr. Mayor, to our city manager, Chris Murray. My understanding is that you got a very clear message from this council that we were to eliminate Scott Park from the formula, that we were going to go with the Jimmy Thompson Pool, we were going to go with the stadium precinct, and everything was all in place. What staff member was working on that area?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Paul Johnson.
Thank you. And knowing what I do know of Paul for the past three years, he didn't just sit down and let this file go out the window. He's been working very hard in this neighborhood, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Sorry?
I'm sorry. I need to verify that there was a second, Counsel Marula is a second, so the motion is properly put now. And I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
Okay. So if I can ask my question again, please. Paul's done a lot of work into this neighborhood, I would assume?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Without Scott Park being a part of this formula?
That's...through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct as well. Paul is the lead of a number of people that are engaged in work in the precinct.
So this motion that's in front of us today is what difference? Other than the building, what difference is it that Paul's been working on?
I think the disposition of Scott Park is a school board land that's under school board control.
Right.
That is a component of the overall precinct. Paul is...everything that Paul is executing right now is separate from the precinct, from...sorry, from Scott Park property. There was a presentation to the precinct subcommittee a few weeks ago, which provided an update as to what's happening with respect to the Bernie Morelli Center. So to be clear on where we are in terms of retaining a consultant to assist with design and the timeline for developing that design and bringing that thing to market to start construction. So I mean, he's been updating committee on a regular basis in terms of that. But he's been doing all of that separate from any further engagement on the Scott Park lands.
Thank you for that. And I guess my last question would be to the mover. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the mover. When this whole file was dealt with at this council meeting, it was...everybody would look at the map and it looked very convoluted, if you will. We had a piece of property here, we had a piece of property here, and there was a school property in the center. And at that time, the will of the council was just to not complicate things and just go ahead and work on the senior center and work on the Jimmy Thompson. Why is it so important for you to include the Scott Park property now?
It's important to have a whole block organized and in place. And I think we should make sense of the whole unit, even with its separate components.
Okay. Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor, to the mover. Have you been aware of all the work that Mr. Johnson has been doing in that area?
No one appreciates more than I do the work he's done.
Okay.
Particularly in my ward. So that's a given. And I'm surprised you'd ask me that question because I do appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
I want to thank the counselor for actually speaking to me on this issue and, as he indicated, some other ones. And I'm very pleased that he's actually stated that it's got nothing to do with reopening the debate with regards to Scott Park High School. Because I tell you, I'm not up for that again. It was an ugly issue in our lives. And I have, you know, as long as I'm a member of this particular council, I have no interest at all in reopening that dialogue there. On the basis of the decision that we made, we've moved on. And Paul Johnson is formulating a plan. And as a result, you know, we've made some acquisitions of lands to complement the whole precinct. Mayor Moro, sorry, Counsel Moro, sitting on the precinct committee now with Counsel Ferguson that knows the progression that's going there. So I think I'm trying to understand the intent. And I'm becoming increasingly probably insistent upon that perhaps we need a progress report from Paul, from Paul with regards to where things are right in play. Because I want to be in a position to ideally support the proper verbiage in... to ideally support the proper verbiage in Counselor Morel's motion, but I don't want something that we would consider approving tonight that would negate all the actions that we've taken to this particular port. So I'm afraid that I'm not in a position to support this tonight until Mr. Johnson either presents to us, or presents to the precinct committee, or presents to the liaison committee, everyone that kind of has all the balls in here at the, at the, at the present time. That's my thoughts, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I respect Counselor Morel's right to bring this forward, and I know he cares about this area very much. I also care very, very much about the Bernie Morelli Senior Center. And, so I'm just going to make some comments, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not going to be supporting this here tonight, and I'll just be asked to be recorded as opposed to this motion here tonight. I guess the Oliver Stone side of me doesn't know where this is all leading. Two weeks ago, we designated King George as, as a possibility for heritage, go through a process. A year ago, the school board said, please, city council, if memory serves me right, don't do that, because it's going to handcuff us. Suddenly, they decided in the last few weeks, leading up to our council meeting, two weeks ago, they were agreeable. So that tells me, the Oliver Stone side of me tells me, okay, you know, is there some possibility? This motion refers to the city manager, in conjunction with you, Mr. Mayor, if you wish, it says right here, if you wish, along with Counselor Morel, supervise discussions, and with all these organizations around the Scott Park lands, which include Bernie's Center, which by the way, we unanimously endorse as the naming of the new center. Very proud of this council. Jimmy Thompson, well, we own that. Playing fields, I remember one of Counselor Morelli, the late Counselor Morelli's concerns was, when we finally voted unanimously, my concern as well, if you remember, Mr. Mayor, again, I'll stand to be corrected, but as that proposed partnership was kind of unraveling, and if I recall, the, the education director was here with a couple of trustees at the time, and they dropped on us the 11th hour that they were going to need some of our park land if they were to build the new Scott Park School, because their footprint, which they have to, which they've expropriated, and I understand they now own, but we don't know what the cost of that is, none of my business, but the footprint of building the new Scott Park High School, Mr. Mayor, wasn't large enough. And if I recall correctly, they dropped on us at the last minute, and one of the final reasons why we all decided to go it alone with Bernie's Center was that some of the green space, I believe where the baseball diamond is, lot of concern that they were going to need some of the city land in order to build the new school. I'm not on for that. Mr. Mayor, as far as I'm concerned, oh, also, up in my area, I won't regurgitate other than in a cursory way to quickly summarize, I had two school communities that were on tender hooks. One Barton High School that originally was told, and this is from community leaders, they were led to believe through the ARC process, the Accommodation Review process of the public school board, they've told me, they were led to believe Barton looked pretty good, they looked safe. Sherwood, of course, sadly, was up for closure by management's first recommendation. One of the best grassroots campaigns I've ever witnessed in my political career here, the Sherwood Neighborhood, the Sherwood School campaign, saved the day for Sherwood High School. 11th hour, the board votes to keep Sherwood open. Congratulations Sherwood, very happy for the neighborhood, the school community, and the organizers. Barton, I can tell you, they felt ambushed at the 11th hour, they felt blindsided, did not see it coming, and they're announced for closure. I've recently spoken to some of the people, the leaders, in the last few days that were involved in both neighborhoods, both schools, both issues, Mr. Mayor, and I can tell you, there's still lingering after effects, very unpleasant ones, that are still left over from the whole process that unfolded. So, Mr. Mayor, as far, oh, and by the way, a few months ago, my council colleague from Ward Four, when asked by a reporter publicly about the feasibility of possibly reopening this, he used a single word from his Italian ancestry and said, "Finito." And I, and I said, I couldn't have said it any more proudly than, we're getting on with building Bernie's Center, we said that unanimously last September, Bernie was here to relish it and enjoy one of his final moments before he went on to glory. And so, Mr. Mayor, I just feel that as much as this may seem innocuous, as much as this might seem like a high-level chat about the Scott Park block, to finish off, the Oliver Stone side of me says that, you know what, I think the public school board, there's something in this down the road, I'm just conjecturing, that eventually is going to draw the city back in, may possibly delay moving on with what we're doing with Bernie, may not, but I don't want to even provide a crack in the door. I'm going to stay consistent with my vote last year, and I'll be asked to be recorded as opposed to this motion. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I have Counselor Clark, Whitehead Duval, and myself on the speakers list. Counselor Clark?
Thank you very much. So, a couple of quick questions, if I may, with regards to the wording in the particular motion that's before us. The word supervise is written in here. Can I ask the mover and the secondary if they're willing to entertain the word facilitate instead of supervise? Because it's, they don't work for us, it's hard to have them, hard for us to supervise, so. So that would be a friendly amendment. And then, in here, it says the Scott Park lands, we're really talking about the stadium precinct lands, not Scott Park per se. Would that be a fair exchange, or?
I always call that block Scott Park.
Yeah, well, we're, historically, Mr. Mayor, we get into trouble later on with wordsmithing if we don't get it right the first time, so.
We're first to that block.
So the entire block, we've been referencing it as the stadium precinct. And the last one, and I sent this by email to, to Counselor Morel earlier today, and just to share it with my colleagues here, I had suggested, whereas the council decision against combining buildings between Scott Park and the Morelli Senior Center is final. If that was at the beginning of it, that would eliminate any consternation of undoing the, the decision of the council. Have you had an opportunity to consider that?
That was my intention, not to-
That was my intention, not to combine and get back into that messy debate. So I think if that was added, it might give some-
And not to have suspicion.
If, I think if that was added, I think the concerns of the council are well-placed, that we've made a decision, we are not interested in going back on the decision. I think in my discussions with Counselor Morel, he's wanting to have discussions about sharing of facilities right in the entire precinct, and, and see what we can come up with in terms of some type of facility-sharing agreement with the board. And I'm not opposed to that, I think that's, that's fine, but it can't go so far as to include the two properties merging as one, and, and we're going to have a, two buildings merged together. The council made that decision, so if we can reaffirm that, and the whereas, and then we're giving clearer direction to the city manager that talks about sharing communal property of the two buildings are off the table, but facility-sharing agreement for everything else in the precinct block can be discussed. And if Counselor Morel is comfortable with that, I'd look to my colleagues to see whether or not they're comfortable, but I think it clarifies that we're not reversing our decision. There'd be no need for reconsideration motion, and it's very clear, everything else is on the table for discussions. And nothing can be approved until it comes back here anyways.
That it?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I sit back here and just think about how protective each and every councillor is in regards to their wards, and I would never question, ever question, whether it's Ward Six doing something at Mohawk Sports Park, or Bimbrook Agricultural Center, or something in Ward Nine. I would rely on good information coming from those good ward councillors, whether it's a partnership, or whether it's, where there's arrangement that provides a service to the broader community, I would, they have the mandate in those particular areas, I would think that they would have the best interests of the citizens in those areas. When I take a look around this chamber, we endorsed Counselor Morel as the representative for Ward Three. Why did we do that? Well, one, because he's not going to run again, but two, because he has vast experience. He's got vast experience on this council for over 22 years. He's come forward with a motion, he's come with a credible motion that's trying to optimize a precinct in the best interest, not of the city, but those that he currently represents. Anything that comes out of this motion still has to come back to this council for final approval. So this is not rubber-stamping anything. I have every bit of trust, Counselor Morel, representing his community, city manager, Paul Johnson, and doing the right thing, and bringing something back to this community, to this, sorry, to this council, that we can be proud of, and that optimizes the very little resources we have on that particular precinct. I find it crazy for any of us not to support this motion in front of us. Thank you.
I would remind everyone in debate that it's not proper to impugn the motives of others. You speak to the motion in your view, and don't suggest anything about others making different positions. Counselor Duval?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank Counselor Morel for trying very hard to represent his constituents, and I understand fully what this, I believe I understand fully what this motion is about. However, I'm having difficulty with it, because I'm not sure where it's going to lead, and I certainly want, don't want to give the impression that I'm going to be supporting changing unanimous decision a few months back with going into some type of talks. So I certainly, I respect what Counselor Morel is doing. I have talked to him, I've shown, explained to him my position, I don't want to get into, but I've been, I have had partnerships with the school board, and they haven't been very successful after many years. And now we're in the problem up in Ward Seven, and many other tax boards are in the, on the, on the hook for this too, of what we're going to do, because they've ended the partnership at their own will. So I can't support what's in front of us tonight. Thank you.
Laura Partridge, I'll take you next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just, I'm just listening to my colleagues around the table, and I'm wondering if perhaps it might be better to table this motion and to have a couple of councillors and staff work on the wording and meet with us, because I, you know, what I'm, I'm hearing, I have some questions through you, Mr. Mayor. Should this really be going through the subcommittee for the school board? Should this really be coming to council? And, and I'm not entirely clear. Excuse me, I have the floor. Well, thank you, Counselor Jackson. I truly appreciate that. So I'm just, and I always get very concerned about us trying to do motions on the fly, especially one that is this important. And I'm not talking about the motion you put forward, I'm talking about the discussion around the table, sir. I appreciate what you're trying to do, and I'm trying to be helpful, but I really think we need more work on this. There needs to be a better explanation. I think it would be helpful to have Paul Johnson have a report back to us. I truly respect the councillor for the ward, and, and also, we all have a great deal of respect for Counselor Bernie Morelli as well. And we all unanimously agreed and supported and moved the motion not to enter into the partnership with the school board. So I don't think we're there yet, and I'm just trying to be prudent and perhaps suggest that we consider tabling it and work on it a bit more. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor? Thank you.
Through you.
Mr. Mayor? Through you, Deputy Mayor. The only piece of the Scott Park lands that's contentious at all is the school board piece. We, as a council, with our neighborhood group, are fully engaged in a mature process to work on these things. There are no issues. The only issue is the Board of Education property. So, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, Counselor Morel, wouldn't you suggest that, that the board be engaged through the liaison committee to, to talk to them about whatever is in your mind about what they should do with their property? This is not our issue. You, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Well, the answer is clearly yes, and it says right here, the appropriate committees, which would include the liaison committee or any other committee empowered to report back to council.
Well, I understand that, but before we deal with motions, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I, I think the proper thing to do would be to speak to the board, because they have an interest, they have a property, we, we've had no issue with anything.
Well, the fact is no-
Good regard, I'm not finished, I have the floor. We have no issue with anything that involves our property. So, once again, could I ask through you, have you discussed this with any members of the school board?
Yes, they've approached me, the chair, the vice chair, and I see in Ward Three the trustee for that ward at public functions. So there has been informal discussion. I've been very careful not to attempt to speak officially on behalf of the council, simply to express my own views as the ward representative. And the fact is, there has been no momentum or action. That's what I'm trying to, to get going, some proper discussion in, in the appropriate formats, and including the whole block.
So, so, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm puzzled by the wording, because I, the city manager in conjunction with the mayor, as he wishes, and the Ward Three councillor to be asked, to be asked, normally, council will give direction, not ask somebody to do something if they wish. And so it seems to be about having a conversation, but the only sticking point is property that doesn't belong to us. So I would really urge, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that, that we set this aside and bring this matter up with the, the school board's joint liaison committee, because frankly, our information is that some of them are puzzled as to why this is going forward. So if there's one particular trustee who has some interest, that's fair, but even he shouldn't bring this matter forward, in my opinion, or she, to the joint liaison, and that's my comment. And so I'll take the chair back and call on Counselor Marula.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess from my perspective, when Counselor Morel approached me on this issue, I, I basically said to him, been there, done it, I wish we, we wouldn't go back. But I think, in, in saying that, if everyone can recall, last summer, when, when Counselor Morelli was in hospital, I did consult with him on a daily basis on this particular initiative with the partnership, he originally was very supportive of the partnership, and he wanted that to come to fruition. And when, when I reported back to him on the fact that it was being derailed, that there wasn't support for it, at the end of the day, it was a question of getting it done and not, he basically said, well, obviously, the recreational center is important. Having said that, I don't think what we, what we have before us, in any way reconsiders our position in any way, what, what it basically does, it allows the city manager, Chris Murray, who I trust implicitly, implicitly, to go back and, and start a discussion or dialogue with all the stakeholders about any potential synergies. And I see it as innocuous. I don't, I don't see this as in any way opening up the discussion that we've already voted on. I honestly see this just simply as an opportunity to see if we can find any synergies. We, we're moving forward aggressively on the Bernie Morelli Rec Center. If we can in some way find- If we can in some way find a savings down the road, why wouldn't we want to initiate discussions accordingly? I think it's a prudent, I think it's a prudent measure. And frankly, if there isn't an opportunity, then I trust Mr. Murray would come back and say, folks, we're either at a crossroads, we need to reconsider, or remain within the course. I don't see this as opening up anything. Honestly, the way it's worded, correct me if I'm wrong, and perhaps I can ask Counselor Morrow to elaborate on it, I think all he's basically asking of us is simply to revisit the discussion from a staff perspective, and he's opening up that dialogue publicly. I see it as innocuous. But if I'm mistaken, I apologize, but through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Morrow, if you could elaborate on that, that'd be appreciated.
I think you've accurately described what my intention is here, and it's simply to get the ball rolling and come up with some momentum and some action, and try to push things in the right direction, bearing in mind there are some difficult time constraints with respect to parking and other issues that should not be left unaddressed at the moment. So I'm concerned about them as well. And the general picture, I think we can do a better job of pulling it together. So I think your description is quite accurate. I appreciate that.
So, Mr. Mayor, just to Mr. Murray, just to elaborate upon that, through you, Mr. Murray, do you see this in any way as a conflict from our original position?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. What I'm hearing in spades is that the conversation about partnering with the school board that would result in any kind of joint facilities completely off the table, and if that was all that would be gleaned from a conversation with the school board, then I'd be reporting back that nothing has changed and we're done. If there's something else that has transpired, because I have not been engaged in any kind of conversation with Dr. Malloy about where they're at and what they're doing specifically with Scott Park or any of that, you know, if something has changed or I can be updated on what they're doing, I can certainly consider that in light of all the work that Paul Johnson is doing. So, I mean, that, as far as I see, it's a conversation to update ourselves, and I think it makes a ton of sense that if we're going to go down this path, and there's support tonight for it, that we would, you know, first have a, you know, a public, a formal conversation about this with the liaison committee, and that could very well lead to an update being taken forward to GIC or to Community Services if that, if it was appropriate. But, you know, I have been told in spades, as staff has been told in spades, what this is not about, and, you know, if there's something else that is of potential interest to this council, certainly we'll hear it at the liaison committee if we're so directed, and then we can take it from there as to what merit there is in this.
So there really isn't anything that we're asking to reconsider, in essence. We're just simply asking for some sort of dialogue for potential synergies in the future, and if those discussions lead to a need for reconsideration, it would all come back to us anyway. So I think what we're just simply, what I think Counselor Morrow is simply asking, and I'll be honest with you, I'd prefer that he didn't bring this forward, because from my perspective, it was done. But in all, with all due respect to Counselor Morrow, I respect and I admire him, and I think that if he can find some synergies, then why wouldn't we at least explore it through dialogue?
Okay, for clarity, I'm not speaking, making an address from the chair. I need to hear clarity.
Okay.
This is lacking in the direct, the direction that we engage with the school board. When you're talking about synergies, and it's not in here, it says organization.
Okay.
No, no, we need to have that clarity.
Let's do it, let's do it now. Let's amend that accordingly.
I have a speaker's list, we're not going to do that now.
Well, if people are willing to bring forward those amendments accordingly, to find those issues, clarify those issues.
Then that's a two-thirds?
Well, no, because we just want a dialogue.
Okay, well, carry on with speaker's list. Are you done, Counselor? Counselor Farr?
I will be brief. Mr. Mayor, I'm supportive. I think it's general enough. I don't think we're looking at anything other than an opportunity for the representative of Ward Three, particularly in you, if you choose, in this motion to have endorsement from this body to go forward and be part of whatever committee talks, talks within the neighborhoods, meetings with, whether it's the stakeholder group that is the school board or any other in the precinct, an endorsement to do so by this body. I know clearly, having talked with Counselor Morrow on occasion on this particular issue, that he has a vested interest. He has, he has spent a lot of time and energy, and certainly a lot of enthusiasm in his desire to move forward, and he's not specifically looking for anything other than here tonight, in my estimation, an endorsement to be a major part of that conversation and in any way he can find possibly, possibly, and it'll all come before us, has been noted several times here tonight, alternatives for us to, at a future date, as a council, have an opportunity to debate and possibly even vote on. But there are more than just, I think, the school board as it relates to stakeholders in the Pan Am precinct. Certainly, there are lots of residents, and they factor in, whether it's parking on lawns or proximity to football games, and obviously, we still have the matter of a park that accommodates what we need to accommodate through policy, through our replacement of Brian Timmons Stadium, and obviously others, and the Tiger Cats are no exception. So I don't see it much more. I think it's general enough for me, understanding and being part of that discussion when Mr. Malloy was up here, and as referenced earlier, gave a set timeframe. I wouldn't call it an ultimatum, but it was an issue at the time. Maybe that is no longer the case. It's clear that future discussions that include all the important people at the table at whatever committee, the liaison or anything else that the mover of the motion deems appropriate wouldn't be harmful to the process, and who knows? What can come out of this may be something that's beneficial ultimately to all the taxpayers of Hamilton.
Thank you. I have Counselor McCady.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and I'm supportive of this because I think it's only prudent to look at this overall precinct, as we're referring to the stadium precinct. I think, Mr. Mayor, as you indicated, or one of the speakers, Counselor Clark, indicated. And the reason I say that is the information we have today is different than it was around Christmas time when we made our decision on the Bernie Morelli Senior Center. At that point, two things had happened. The school board had identified the Scott Park site as their preferred site for the downtown high school, and we, that evening, said that we're going to build the Bernie Morelli Senior Center, and we added that we would not be participating with the school board on the high school and any kind of joint initiative. So those were givens at that point in time when we made our decision. Those haven't changed. Those are still the relevant details. What has changed, though, since that time, is the school board did go ahead and expropriate the Scott Park High School location.
It is expropriated.
It is expropriated, and that land is there now, owned by the school board. They're talking about a parking lot, they're talking about different uses of it, but that is a new action since we made our decision. We've taken action here at City Council on the King George School, identifying it as a building we're interested in from a heritage perspective, talking about designation of that school. And the lands the King George School on are on, are the school itself, of course, but then the green lands behind the school as well. Tim Wharton Stadium is much further along than, thank goodness, than it was at that point in time. And then, of course, we have the adjacent parkland, the Ball Diamonds and that sort of thing, which haven't changed, those are ours and remain ours. So I think there's some additional pieces on the table than there was when we made our decision before. I think it's important to pull all these pieces together again, and if they're going to go ahead with their high school, you know, or if we need some more land for parking for our rec center, or there's the green space around the King George School, either designated and protected as it is today, and there's a green space behind there, how does that factor in? Is there any flexibility we have on the ballpark, the Diamonds lands? I think that's really what Counselor Morrow is asking here, is we take a holistic look at the lands, particularly given the changes that have occurred since Christmas time when we made our decision. And I think it's only prudent, it's only proper planning, good planning, for that to occur. As to where the report comes back, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the school liaison committee, and, you know, I think it makes sense to involve that committee. It was set up for those kind of discussions. That's, I'll leave it up to you in terms of making amendment on that. But I think what's happening here is simply good planning. Thanks.
To be clear, Counselor, assistance from the chair, what, from your presentation, we would require a two-thirds reconsideration.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure I understand your comment.
Situations have changed. We thought one thing at one time, we're thinking something else now. So that's reconsideration of, which would require two-thirds.
Mr. Mayor, with respect.
You need to be wording carefully not to hit the two-thirds.
Yeah. With respect, Mr. Mayor, I know Counselor Morrow has worked with clerks on this motion, and it's my understanding that we don't need a two-thirds on the wording we have before us. I'll leave it to Counselor Morrow to expand upon that.
All right. I have Counselor Whitehead for a second time, Counselor Marula for a second time.
Thank you, and I, you know, for historic reasons, I need to mention this. For thirty-five, forty, fifty years in the city of Hamilton, there has been actually fairly good relationship with the school board. We've had rec centers adjoining schools, and we entered in those arrangements because there was good relationships. What's transpired in the last number of years is that the province changed the funding formula and forced an imposition on the school boards. We didn't contemplate when we entered in those agreements, shared parkland, shared rec centers, MOUs. And with an absence of those MOUs contemplating the closure of schools, what transpired with the process, it left a bad taste. I acknowledge that. It left a bad taste in a number of counselors' mouths. But at the end of the day, you can't ignore the fact that we had almost fifty years of a great relationship with those facilities in conjunction with the school boards. You can't just throw that away and say it didn't exist. I can tell you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, that right now I have a brand-new rec center at Westmount. It's on school board property, that the school board gave and sold to the city, and by facilitating that, we're allowing them to use our park for football practices. Sir Alec McNabb School and Rec Center, we built a multi-purpose patio on the school board property next to the rec center, and I can tell you, great partnership, great relationship. So please do not allow, and going forward in regards to any relationship with the school board, partnership or synergistic, there's no question that contemplating the worst, which wasn't contemplated fifty years ago when we entered into some of these arrangements, we can address those issues on a goal-forward basis. Does it mean we can't enter into great relationships, continued great relationships, contemplating the things we didn't contemplate in the past? So to poison the environment, continue to poison the environment in regards to the relationship, doesn't help anybody, it doesn't help with the taxpayer. I am very, very supportive of any counselor who wants to optimize the efficiencies and costs and synergies in a precinct. That's what this motion does, and that's why I'm supporting it.
Thank you. Counselor Clark.
Thank you. So the more I listen to the debate, the little bit more confused I'm getting here. So I'm going to ask some pointed questions, if I may, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the mover and the seconder. Have there been discussions about a land swap with the school board?
No, not that I'm aware of or part of.
So has there been discussions that the school needs, the school board needs more land for Scott Park? Because initially, they told us they didn't have enough land for it.
No. No, I've been careful not to get into that kind of discussion that I didn't know enough about, and it was not my business to presume to speak on behalf of the city for it. That's why I have this kind of motion before you.
With regards to parking, what's the parking issue?
It's what was brought to the stadium committee a couple of weeks ago, namely, the need for parking for Pan Am, and I assume Tiger Cats, games as well.
So is it possible, Mr. Mayor, to have some discussions with Mr. Morrow and find out exactly what the intentions are? Because he said a number of times here, the intention is not to reexamine the Bernie Morelli Senior Center. So it's a standalone building owned by the city, we're going to control that building. That there's not going to be a connection between that building and Scott Park, which is what the council's decision was. So it's, I guess it's hard for councilors to send people off on a fishing expedition to look for synergies without an idea of what the synergies are that they're looking for. And I don't know what they're looking for. I, you know, I'm watching and listening to all of this, and based on what I heard last time, Mr. Mayor, was that the school board indicated very clearly they needed more land from us in order to proceed with Scott Park. That was a part of the discussion. So I'm assuming that hasn't changed because they still have the same number count. We moved the motion to basically shutter King George with the motion from Counselor Morrow. So soon as you declare that a heritage property, it really puts the handcuffs on the school board. So that property doesn't seem to be an attractive proposition for them in terms of building a school. So I'm trying to exactly understand what they're looking for from us. And if someone could help me with that, it would.
Counselor Morrow, do you want to?
Yeah, exactly what I said, I'd like to get some, some action, sense of progress here. There are some things pending that should be dealt with, and I really felt strongly there should be a pulling together of the whole quadrant block precinct so that we have better ideas to where we're headed. There seemed to me to be a lack of focus when I came here several months ago and trying to pull that together and help with respect to the ward I have the honor of representing. And I felt that this motion pulled together enough support and interest on the part of the council to do that.
And you use the term "lack of focus." Can I just ask, lack of focus? The city wants the seniors building, the city just wants to renovate Jimmy Thompson, the city wants to fix up the Ball Diamonds and make that appropriate. I think the focus from the city is pretty clear, so I'm trying to understand where the lack of focus is.
That's what I perceived and would like to help correct.
Okay, and we haven't, I'd really like to hear from Mr.
I should add, I considered the amendments you suggested earlier to be friendly, and I would support them if you're interested in advancing them.
Thank you very much. And is it possible to get a report from Mr. Johnson in terms of where they are on the precinct property before we deal with this?
Mr. Murray?
I mean, he's the one that we charge to have all of these discussions, so.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, of course.
So we should hear from.
So I'm still, I'm still in Counselor Morrow's court. I believe his intent is noble, I believe he's trying to find some synergies. I understand the concern of my colleagues completely, but I need to have more support in terms of moving forward with the motion. So if we could hear from Mr. Johnson and understand exactly what he's been doing, that would be helpful prior to making this decision, and then perhaps we can actually, as Counselor Partridge said, just tweak the motion a little bit so that we have more comfort with our colleagues around the table. I'm not keen on having a vote where it's eight-eight split, eight-six split. I'd like to have this stadium precinct, which we have spent so much time on, go forward with unanimous support. That's what we've had so far. I'd like to have that continue. And I think we can get. And I think we can get there if we kind of talk it out and hear everyone out. So that would be my suggestion, that it would be appropriately tabled to another GIC where Mr. Johnson can come in and answer some questions for us and give us an update. And then from there, we can look at dealing with the item.
I'm seeing nods from the city manager. Thank you, Counselor Jackson. And then Counselor Powers.
So, Mr. Mayor, just through you to the city manager, and city manager, I will humbly apologize if my memory bank is flawed, but just to pick up on what Counselor Clark said, and I said that in my speech earlier, I seem to recall very vividly, Mr. Malloy said last year, and he dropped it on us, if I recall, one of the last meetings, a week before, we decided to finally vote unanimously, save for Counselor Pesuda, who was absent, to build the Bernie Morelli Senior Center alone. And I recall that they, to build the new Scott Park High School, would have needed some portion of city-owned land. Mr. Mayor, through you to the city manager, please. Chris, for a response. If my memory's off, Chris, tell me, I'll be the first to apologize.
It's you, Mr. Mayor. Your memory is not off. That was what was said at that time.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chris.
Counselor Powers?
So just kind of adding on to what Counselor Clark has indicated, if it indeed is the desire of us tonight to set this aside, to allow Mr. Johnson to present, as you're aware, we have a busy GIC agenda, which we've, we're splitting it up into two meetings. We're having on Wednesday, the 18th of June, then again on June, the 23rd. So from a timeliness, if indeed Mr. Johnson was in a position to come to the 23rd meeting to make that presentation, it would still leave the opportunity for this council to make a decision on June, the 25th, if indeed it's that's their pleasure.
So the motion is on the floor, seconded. Would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I think this advances the cause that I'm trying to promote, so I can support it.
Thank you. So, on the motion, all in favor?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Now, we go back to seven-five. Revised. Counselor Marula?
On seven-five, move by myself, seconded by Counselor Collins, and this is related to proceeds for fines to be used for environmental mitigation regarding air quality, whereas the Ministry of Environment is responsible for levying fines on companies who have contravened environmental standards, and whereas these fines and associated monies are received by the City of Hamilton for those contraventions in our jurisdiction, and whereas the City of Hamilton, our community stakeholders and local partners are focused on continuous improvement and methods to reduce impacts on the environment, particularly air quality in the impacted area, therefore be it resolved that the city set up an environmental air quality mitigation reserve and work with community stakeholders, including Environment Hamilton and Clean Air Hamilton, on identifying environmental air quality mitigation tools and community development initiatives focused on air quality in the impacted area that would be the recipients of funds received.
Sorry, did you have a seconder? I didn't hear that.
Collins.
Collins, thank you.
Just briefly, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the good news, the good news, good news is that the province or the courts have, in an unprecedented way, provided the City of Hamilton with funds from a fine levied against A.M. ArcelorMittal de Fasco. In doing so, because of the unprecedented nature of it, we're in a situation where I believed that it would be in the best interest to focus in on utilizing those funds, and in this case is $390,000, to set up a reserve fund to have or focus in on creating an environment conducive to sustaining the actual initiatives that led to the conviction itself. In this particular case, Environment Hamilton's Back Watch program was vital in the conviction itself. So the question became, and in speaking with Linda Lukasik and others at Environment Hamilton and Public Health, is how do we focus in on utilizing these funds to ensure, particularly the fact that these funds are coming from industry? So what better way than getting industry's money to actually monitor themselves? As you know, Mr. Chairman, the environment and environmental enforcement and monitoring is not within our jurisdiction of the City of Hamilton. It is strictly 100% provincial. We know that we're faced with challenges regarding legislation that allows for voluntary compliance versus what used to be mandatory pre-1995. So now, since 1995, we've been subjected to a number of issues, particularly surrounding the voluntary component. So Hammond, which is the network locally, which is the voluntary group, we've had situations where people have voluntarily decided not to pay into it because the Ministry of Environment or the front line cannot force anyone due to legislation to participate. So as a direct result, what we've seen is we've seen those industries in locally that don't want to participate because they're allowed to not participate, not pay into it. So because of that, we encountered some shortfalls. And in January, we had a situation, and everyone recalls the application that both Counselor Collins and I fought against, and that was Liberty Energy, because of the, and Counselor McCady, because of the issues, and Morelli at the time, because of the issues surrounding the airshed issues, they were denied their application. So they were paying or voluntarily paying into this air monitoring station. When their application, when their application was denied, amazingly enough, you've got to, you've got to give them some credit in that they continued paying it even after their application was denied. And everyone recalls their proponent, his name escapes me at this point, but...
Wilson Noel.
Wilson Noel, yes. He was a true gentleman, true gentleman, although what he was trying to sell, we didn't really buy into, which was a good thing to the community. And in saying that, finally, the monitoring station was discontinued financially. So there's no policy at Hammond presently to notify the public or go through a consultative process. I'm pleased to announce tonight, as a result, I attended the Clean Air meeting on Monday, and at that particular meeting, we had Hammond representatives, Public Health representatives, Environment Hamilton representatives, and I brought forward four requests, and those four requests were all unanimously supported by the group. And one, and more, most importantly, I believe, is the fact that both the Fasco and U.S. Steel have agreed to develop a policy for a public consultation process before shutting down any air monitoring stations in the future. And I applaud them for agreeing to that. Also, with respect to that, comes our involvement. Apparently, through Public Health, we as a city cannot be a member of an incorporated entity such as Hammond, but Public Health, through Dr. Richardson, is investigating means of perhaps buying into it, because we presently have, that we're paying into an air monitoring station as a Woodward treatment plant, but we're not considered a full-fledged member. So now they're investigating a possibility of doing that. The other constructive piece to all of this is the fact that, and that I asked Hammond to disclose, and it is public information, and Environment Hamilton at the, at the meeting, and so did the Ministry of Environment, who endorsed all of these, did clearly state that the list of corporations can be revealed that are not paying into it. But I thought, we're not here to try to embarrass anyone, but we are here to try to give somebody an opportunity to make amends for whatever reason they haven't participated in the past. So they are actively seeking out an answer from those existing members. The information is public, it will be made public, and I'm hoping that from now till then, some of these companies who were part of it that are no longer part of it will reconsider and be part of the solution. Also, and more importantly, with respect to the community input, as I've mentioned in this motion, all of these funds will be directed to Clean Air Hamilton in conjunction with how that group, that is represented by Ministry of Environment, Environment Hamilton, Public Health, decide how these monies are spent. And also, delegation requests will be actively, I will be aggressively pursuing delegation requests from the general public for those that want to be part of a process of providing input on how these monies should be spent. So we're going to leave it to the experts, and we're going to leave it to the public to decide how this money will be spent. From my perspective, it's great to have it away from the politicization of it all, and hence, giving it to Clear Hamilton, who is represented by the Ministry of Environment, Public Health, McMaster University, Environment Hamilton, those are the individuals that know, and a lot of them have, have a proven track record, as we've seen because of this conviction, will decide where those monies are spent. It will come to council for ratification accordingly, so it will be a recommendation to this council. Through that process, the public individually, people in the residence or anywhere in the city, can come forward and put forward together a proposal for how they believe this should be spent, which I welcome and I encourage. So the motion is before you. I want to, I want to thank Clear Air Hamilton for their endorsement, the Fasco, U.S. Steel for also coming up, coming up with the commitment of continuing to strengthen Christopher's monitoring station subsequent to my asking them to do so. I think that speaks volumes, although there is hard feelings, I believe. The fact that they quickly stepped to the plate is something that we should applaud, and perhaps it could be a signal for a future relationship with them over and above the $100 million that they've also committed for the upgrade. So I look forward to all of this coming together, and I'm going to have this plane land soon. And I appreciate your time, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you.
And Counselor, on behalf of all of us, thank you for your reference. Counselor McCady, please, and then Counselor Johnson.
I think this is an interesting phenomenon. This is one of the first times, as Counselor Marula has indicated, that a fine of this type has come to a municipality, $390,000, not a small number, although I certainly have to mention that there were a number of charges against ArcelorMittal de Fasco, and they were only charged, only convicted of a smaller number of those based on a plea bargain. So they, there's certainly much more pollution going on than they're actually charged for. But that's beside the point in terms of the money that's before us and the motion that's before us. I wonder if I can ask for you to, Counselor Marula, because I, I know, I think this is Counselor Marula's intention, as I was copying on a couple of emails with the neighborhood associations, the community groups, who, who I guess were, given the geography of the area, were subject to some of the air pollution problems that occurred as a result of the ArcelorMittal de Fasco emissions. And I believe it's Counselor Marula's intention to, to ensure that those community groups, those neighborhood associations, the people in that area that were affected, that are affected, are certainly involved in this process, and I would suspect would be the recipients of some of the funds received as it goes through the process that's been talked about in Counselor Marula's motion. I think that's the sense, and I know there's been some concerns, so I wonder if Counselor Marula could speak to that.
Clearly, as I illustrated, in my comments, the process is to provide Clear Air Hamilton with the recommendation authority, and Clear Air Hamilton represents Environment Hamilton, the Ministry of Environment, Public Health, and we as a council or GIC can always accept GIC delegation requests. So they can also be delegates or delegations at Clear Air Hamilton. So they'll have two avenues, the general public will, at any given time, is to bring forward their proposal at either Clear Air Hamilton to be heard, which again is represented by Ministry of Environment, Environment Hamilton, Public Health, and McMaster University, and also the general public. So they'll have that avenue. Also, whatever recommendation Clear Air Hamilton will make will come to GIC as a recommendation. Final ratification is made by this council, which means that GIC, there'll be another opportunity at GIC for the public to come forward as a delegation to either bring a new proposal forward, oppose a proposal, and/or support a proposal. So there will be those checks and balances. The bottom line is, I'm trying to find a balance between sustaining what has been successful in keeping the industry accountable and the public input. And that balance is very key in ensuring that it doesn't become politicized, but that it focuses on the expert input that will continue ensuring accountability on a part of industry.
So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think that, that's, that's a good, a good approach. So it sounds to me like the, from a transparency and access perspective, the neighborhood groups, the associations, all the folks that have been involved in the area, will have the opportunity to appear in front of the various bodies to perhaps make presentations or even submissions to, to access the funds that are available. Just because I don't, I don't know the full membership of Clean Air Hamilton, but if we're asking them to administer these funds, does ArcelorMittal de Fasco sit on Clean Air Hamilton? I'm just wondering about the potential conflict that they're, in fact, the polluter, I guess in this case, and the fine being levied against them, and does that pose a challenge? And I don't know if Counselor Marula or Rob Wallace here from Public Health, who may know the membership of Clean Air Hamilton. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you.
Just to note, it's a larger body than I had anticipated when I attended, hence the reason why I didn't have enough copies of everything I presented. Having said that, the group is represented, as I mentioned earlier on three occasions, Public Health, the Ministry of Environment, Environment Hamilton, and the two Hammond representatives, which are the Fasco, the two largest, the Fasco and U.S. Steel, and so, and a citizen membership. But the vast majority are non-industry, which means that in essence, the expert input prevails over that of the industry input. And whatever recommendation that they make ultimately is not ratified until it comes to council, to committee and/or council. So in essence, there's that check and balance as well.
Hey, White. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. This is a unique situation for us, a new situation for us. So I think we're, it probably certainly bodes well to follow Counselor Marula's direction. I suspect we could always make modifications, depending how it evolves over time, and there may be additional funds in the future, who knows how it goes with MOE and others. But I look forward to seeing how this unfolds. Thank you.
And if I could just add, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that it was fully endorsed unanimously by all members of Clear Air Hamilton.
Counselor Johnson, please.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Counselor Marula, for bringing this forward. If I can just put a friendly amendment in a couple of these, and one of them is, you've got work with community stakeholders, including Environment Hamilton. Can we put in there "including but not limited to"? That way it leaves the door open for others that are part of this, because we also have Green Venture, we also have a couple of other environment groups that are involved. And the other friendly amendment would be where initiatives focused on air...
So that's in the last paragraph, is it, right there?
In the last paragraph, yeah.
In the second line of the last paragraph?
Just including but not limited to, and then the initiatives focused on air quality. I just want to ask the mover if air quality is, is the only focus you want to do with this, or environmental issues do you want to do with? And the reason I'm asking you this is that in 2006, when there was this big, huge fallout, you would go outside your patio and you would see shiny stuff on your furniture, and you, all you'd have to do is take your hand and wipe it, and it'd come away black. And even though that became, come from the air, it ended up being a, an environmental issue on the ground. So I'm just wondering if we could, if you could take a look at that, if it's not, has to be just air quality?
No, that was actually, to you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that was specifically by Linda Lukasik mentioned that it needs to be emphasized as air quality, because presently, there are, there is legislation regarding other types of fallout, but air quality, there isn't. So it specifically needs to be focused in on air quality only, because we have legislation to deal with all the other types of fallouts, which we did target Colombian chemicals successfully back in 2006.
Right. So I wasn't going to mention the company, but you did.
No, I did. We gave them a word, because they've come a long way since then.
Yes, they have. Put a big C on the smokestack and everything for us. It was wonderful. The other thing that I have... The other thing that I have here is, coming from that field, you understand that there's not a whole lot of pockets of money out there available to do advocacy work or anything like that. So I'm wondering, this is basically setting up a grant and it's a grant system to allow groups to come in and use it for air quality issues, and I'm just wondering where the terms of reference is going to come from?
That will be determined based on, once this is approved, Clean Air will then pan out the terms of reference, which ultimately will come to us for final ratification.
Okay, thank you, because that's the other issue. I don't want it to be-
Everything that we do at this point forward is going to Clean Air, then going back to us, always coming back to us before anything happens from ratification.
And that's no problem. I like the fact that it's a third arm away. What I would like to see, though, is some terms of reference, because it gives everyone, including the community, a clear understanding what this grant process is for and what are the perimeters of this grant process, because as I said, pockets out there are very limited.
And you'll have every opportunity to, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the public will as well, once Clean Air Hamilton determines those terms of reference and submits it into us as their terms of reference for us to debate it and to also invite public discussion on it.
Thank you. And the last thing I was going to ask was, there was some reference to the Hamilton Community Foundation. Is that reference still here?
No, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I did neglect to mention that at the beginning. Over the weekend, in discussions with them, and it kind of got derailed only because I wasn't prepared to give up control of the money. I was hoping the matching funds would be ours to control. Apparently, Community Foundation doesn't work that way. So having said that, I pulled the plug on it.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Further questions? If not, I'd like to go to the motion. All those, sorry, question councillor Whitehead? Call the question, thank you. As amended, as agreed to by the mover, all those in favor, opposed, the motion's carried. Councillor Pearson, will you take the motion? Take the chair, please, with regards to, I'm now going to eight, one, notice of motion. This is a notice of motion, which I'll leave as a notice of motion. There appears to be some lack of understanding as to what the position of this council is with regards to our transit format, so I would like to put on the books that notwithstanding council's position of support for LRT, subject to 100% provincial funding, council reconfirms its support for the action plan outlined on pages 43 and 44, the rapid ready report attached here to as appendix A, and directs that the relevant staff report to the appropriate committee with a schedule for implementation, be prepared as soon as realistic. It's a notice of motion. Back to me. Thank you very much. Item 8.2 is a notice of motion from councillor Duval. I wish you, I believe you wish to waive the rules to allow the introduction of this as a motion.
Yes, this, Mr. Sheriff.
Moved by councillor Duval, seconded by councillor Whitehead, to waive the rules to allow the introduction of a motion regarding a one-time grant to the Canadian Football Hall of Fame. All those in favor, opposed, the motion's carried. You have before us a motion moved by yourself, seconded by councillor Whitehead.
This was seconded by councillor Farr.
Oh, by councillor Farr. Excuse me. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and to our council members. First, I'd like to just apologize for having this brought on tonight immediately. It's been, this was not my idea, my intent to do this, but it's a matter of some emergency funding that is going to be needed for the Hall of Fame. And at the same time, before I get into it, I want to thank Mike Kotopoulos and Chris Murray for being available yesterday afternoon, all last night and today working on this, that we maybe have, perhaps give some kind of assistance to the Hall of Fame. As your representative, myself and councillor Farr, we were approached yesterday, or I'm sorry, today's Wednesday, Monday night, if we could actually meet the Chair of the Board of the Hall of Fame and Museum. We met yesterday afternoon and there was an urgency there that we had found out that one of our major sponsors has withdrawn, and that was budget money that we're counting on to make our operations goal come forward. So we've been struggling in the last few months and to the point where it's very critical that something be done. More money will be coming to the Football Hall of Fame on our other venues that we have, you know, with the Grey Cup, the celebration of that and our Hall of Famers, but that money that we get from that is used for those type of, in that kind of the fourth quarter that we'll still need for operating. So it's going to put them behind in the eight ball. Another reason for the short change is the lack of attendance that's been happening at the Hall of Fame across the street. This has been declining ever since the construction of the City Hall, when it was barricaded off, they've never recovered from it. And there's been talk out there, you know, for relocation, maybe even leaving Hamilton, but we've been assured that that's not the case of the Hall of Fame, they want to maintain and stay in Hamilton and looking at for relocation. So the $100,000 grant is to help with a little bit of the operating costs to get them over this hump until the remainder of their funds will come in that they budgeted for. And the other would be for some seed money that, talks that are ongoing between our city manager and the CEO of the CFL to extend the lease agreement, where we have some good prospects for new sponsors, but they want to see some kind of stability and sustainability for this hall, which is unknown at this time, but if they had a better relocation where there's more high traffic, the people visiting it become more exposed, we feel we can make a big hit. And I want to let yous know that this is a not-for-profit organization, they run on a shoestring budget, and unfortunately, last year, we ran in the red by about $4,000 or $5,000, I believe, which now put us in a position where we could not apply for grants from the federal government or the Ontario government, because we have to show a bit of a profit. So it's been a very, very hard year and it's very critical that they get some type of assistance, funding to get them over this hump and also to start from seed money to help us with the talks that we're going to be doing with the city manager and going for on a forward basis of helping out with another relocation for them. So I'm hoping, Mr. Chris Murray, can add on to this to give some information, because I know this is a big sum of money and it's been jumped on to you, but the Hall of Fame basically really needs help at this particular time. So thank you.
Councillor Farr, please.
Yeah, I'll ask Chris to chime in and I'll just briefly speak to what our longtime Canadian Football Hall of Fame and Museum member that represents this council has eloquently put forth. It's not, no easy task to ask this, we do apologize for this last-minute effort on a part of the entire board, and I know I can speak for our chairman, the former famous Hamilton quarterback, Chairman Marler. It wasn't easy for him to approach us the other day as well, but we are in a bind, it came quickly. The major sponsorship that was lost is a big part of this and I'm glad it was referenced by councillor Duval, Mr. Deputy Mayor. It's ongoing, we continue to operate on very slim margins, we try very hard, we market as best we can, we create partnerships wherever and whenever we can, and that includes relationships established by a very good executive director in Mark Noble across this nation. And we include a lot of people and there are good members on that board from the CFL, there are good members from our Hamilton community, as provided to us through our selection committee, and again councillor Duval has been very, very, very supportive and helpful in tackling some budgetary issues in creative ways, I might add, over the three years and a bit that I've been part of it, and it's been fun watching him work and actually working with him. Another way, when we talk about those slim margins that he and I work together, that you're all aware of, is the annual golf tournament that Scott and I put together just to get, if we can, 10 grand thrown at the bottom line, because anything and everything truly does help. There are some great people that I know are humbled by our efforts, but are also very aware that it's not an easy ask, regardless of that. Attendance isn't a factor, it's been very low, even to the point, Mr. Deputy Mayor, where I plan on bringing up at our next meeting as an agenda item, as offside, to use a football reference, as this may sound, it actually threw a good discussion with Mike Zagaric yesterday on this matter, and I appreciate finances assistance on this as well, Spiler and Zagaric. We may actually be better served, given how low the attendance is and how little income we receive in attendance, to contemplate free admission for a limited time, maybe leading up to the Hall of Fame game, and I plan on bringing that forward just to get people back in the doors and get used to going to the hall again. It's a jewel in this community, it's one the CFL endorses must stay here, which is thanks to Chris Murray and his ongoing talks with Cohen and the rest of the gang at the CFL, but it's one that maybe we sometimes, as Hamiltonians, overlook or we just take advantage of, and that happens, and fair enough, there's so many other things to do and there's other extenuating factors, like the construction is referenced, but regardless, we are where we are here tonight. I know that in this fall, with all of what we have projected, we are going to be in much better shape, but we need to get there and this is our, hopefully with acceptance here tonight, our way of doing so. So I'll ask through you for Chris to just generally speak to the issue in advance of that, thank him for his input as well, leading up to this point.
I'll go to other speakers, then I'll come to Mr. Murray before we go to the vote, if that's okay. Councillor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate our two councillors sitting on the board and trying to assist them. So I'm just curious, do we have copies of their latest financial statements so we can see exactly what's going on? Anybody, your staff or councillors, I mean, I'm understanding that they had a loss last year and you're indicating that there's a problem now, you're asking for $100,000, but we don't have financial statements showing exactly what's going on.
I can quickly, through you, say that we looked at some statements with our meeting with the chairman the other day and not available at this time, but we can vouch for the woes, if you will.
So are they available, though, that we can get them? And the sense of urgency, I know you waived the rules to get it on the floor, how quickly is the, I mean, historically, we do this with any group that's asking for money, we would like to see exactly what's going on before we start coughing up money and I'm loath to do something different than I have in the past. So I'm just curious how quickly we could get those statements so that I could review them for my own personal edification before I make a decision on giving money to them.
I can only say through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to councillor Clark, I am sure that the statements would be available upon request as soon as we ask. The problem is that some of the payments that need to be made, there's a few, as early as next week. So I'm not sure what you're looking for on that type of security of it. Usually when we have our budget, we basically, in fact, I've never seen us, only in the last couple of years, about two years, come and maybe made $8,000 or $9,000 profit in a year. Other than that, we're just on the borderline, but we don't normally come to council for any kind of funding. We have the grants that we get about $5,000 a year.
Councillor Duval, let me try to get Mr. Zagaric, he might be in a position to kind of assist you in answering the good councillor's question. Mrs. Zagaric?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we as finance do not request the audited financial statements from the Hall of Fame as they aren't incorporated into our consolidated financial statements, but they might have submitted their audited financial statements if they applied for funding through the community partnership program, so we can, again, I will reach out to our staff who help administer the community partnership program to try to assess whether or not we have received a grant application from the Football Hall of Fame and whether or not their latest financial statements were provided as part of that process.
Okay, and I'm not questioning the judgment of my two colleagues, I know that they're trying to do their best. It's the thing that I have historically, that I want to see the financial statements so I can exactly extrapolate where they're going to be two years from now, three years from now, or how long this grant is going to have to go on. And we need to know that information before we start, in my opinion, providing a $100,000 grant to an organization. I don't know how precarious they are, I'm hearing that they're in trouble in terms of paying bills in the near future, but it would be nice to actually know exactly where they're going and what the pattern is, and we don't have any of that information, so I just raise that as a concern for me before we provide money.
Councillor Whitehead, please.
I understand the due diligence councillor Clark is asking for and is a standard request and it's a reasonable one. I think my concern here is that I think there might be a payroll issue where employees will not be paid or may not be paid as a result of inadequate funding. And the last thing I would hope or would want is employees that put hours in not to be paid. So I don't know how you reconcile that unless we're prepared to have those employees, if that is the case, not be paid for two weeks.
Councillor Partbridge, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and I mean, I agree, our practice has been that we do ask for financial statements, but what I'm wondering is that if it is a payroll issue-
They're working on-
Right, no, but I want to make sure that they hear what I have to say. So if it is a payroll issue or if there are, as I'm hearing, some urgencies that are going to be due next week, perhaps, that we could extend, you know, I don't know, $20,000 now and then the balance to be on receipt of the financial statement so that we have a chance to look at them, I think that's being more than fair and that also doesn't break the precedence that we've set with other organizations or open that door for anyone to challenge us. So I'll move that, if that's acceptable, and councillor Clark is seconding that.
So the suggestion would be is that the motion would be amended with an initial draw of $20,000?
Or if there's another figure that would be more appropriate, I'll ask through you to the mover.
I think it would be fair to say if we could make $50,000 and then they come back for the other $50,000 through here, because there's some outstanding monies that have to be paid within the next two weeks and it would probably be coming up to that amount. That's what my understanding was, and if Mr. Murray, he was in the same room as I was, he can make comments on that, but what I think the figure was, councillor Farr, was around $52,000 in the next two weeks or something, right?
So my suggestion is the $100,000 as you're asking, but that the $50,000, if everybody's in agreement to that, be extended, be extended in the sense of urgency and the rest of it be dependent on receiving those financial documents, which they should be able to provide. I don't know what the year end is, but if the year end is our typical fiscal year end to December 31st, then they may have some financial statements available now that they could give us from last year, but certainly, you know, their accountant should be able to pull it forward. So I just offer that up and if the seconder is still in agreement with that, I'll let him speak to it. Thank you.
So I'd indicated that I was going to call upon Mr. Murray for his comments and this sounds like the first perfect time before we go to the suggested amendment.
Through you, Deputy Mayor, in terms of the sense of urgency and the amount of money that's just been discussed, I mean, that's my understanding that deferring this for much longer would represent a problem for the organization, so something in the order of $50,000, $52,000 is consistent with what I understand. But just so I can provide a bit of context here to everyone, the last couple of months I've had the opportunity to sit down with the councillors and representatives of the Hall of Fame to talk about the forward position, where the hall is right now and where it could be moving to with respect to scope, scale, location, governance, these are the kinds of things that we've been talking about. And that at this point in time, I've had the opportunity to speak with Michael Cohen and converse with him through email as well. What's clear to me is, and what is in the motion, that there's no doubt in his mind that the hall's presence in Hamilton is a given. They certainly, my expectation based on the conversation with him is that they will continue to have a financial role to play. They are interested, though, in what is, as I say, the scope and scale of the museum itself, whether or not it remains a facility as big as this one is a question that- itself, whether or not it remains a facility as big as this one is a question that needs to be addressed. Where to locate it within the city of Hamilton is another matter that needs to be looked at. The goal here, I think of all the parties, as I understand it, is to put it in a position where it will be sustainable well into the future. And that's really some of the focus that we have right now with the two parties. And as I say, the second part here is in terms of the ongoing governance and so there needs to be a discussion as to how best to meet the interests of those that look after the board today here in Hamilton and what the CFL's role might be in that board going down the road. So no question, there's a bit of an urgency right now in terms of the financial situation and I believe within a short period of time, the requisite financial statements that I think Counselor Clark is looking for and Counselor Partridge is looking for and the rest of this council is something that can be assembled to, as I understand it, and that's pretty much where we stand.
Back to you, Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you. So I'm pleased to hear that they're talking about staying in Hamilton because I remember not too long ago, Counselor DeVall and I sat through some difficult meetings with the board and there was no intention of staying in Hamilton, they made it pretty clear that they were looking at all options. So if we are going to entertain this, I would suggest strongly that the condition be attached that they remain in Hamilton for a period of time so that, you know, we have an opportunity to actually gain some economic development benefit from it as opposed to them taking their money and then running off to Toronto or Montreal. And how much is the CFL paying?
I would have to, I don't know it off the top, it's in the tens of thousands, it's, you know, in the bigger scheme of things.
So CFL's paying less and we're going to kick in $100,000 to keep them whole? Why aren't we splitting it with the CFL that Mr. Cohen is so excited about keeping this place whole?
Well, through you, Deputy Mayor, I mean, again, we're in the, you know, I mean, we're in the early stages of a conversation about what the Hall should be here in Hamilton and what the governance of that is. So we have not gotten into the point where additional funds could be requested from them. I mean, again, all I can say, the circumstances that have been unfolding over the last couple of days are being dealt with tonight in terms of there being a commitment to, you know, coming to some meeting of the minds in terms of the relationship between the CFL and the Hall is, it's in the early days, but, you know, I'm encouraged by what Michael had to say in terms of, as I understood as well from meeting with the councillors, the conversation previously, as you point out, Counselor Clark, was, there wasn't an appetite for staying in Hamilton, but clearly what Michael has said to me is that there is. And I'm with the councillors and board members starting at that point. One of the things I have shared with the councillors is that I would like to have a draft MOU established with the CFL and the group that oversees the Hall right now so that I have some sense of how we're going to work together to resolve what this museum ought to be here in Hamilton and what the governance might be.
I thought there was an MOU because that's what we relied on when we were discussing the situation three or four years ago.
So if I can, just through the councillor, through the Deputy Mayor, the MOU I'm referring to, whether that's the right term or not, is really an understanding of how we're going to work together going forward in terms of resolving, again, the museum and what it ought to be here in Hamilton so that it is, it provides high entertainment value to the citizens of Hamilton and others that are visiting here. And as well, an MOU around, you know, what some of the expectations might be around the future governance model that we're going to use to oversee this.
And finally, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the $52,000, what's it for?
My understanding is they have some outstanding debts, the specifics, I don't know all of them, to be honest, and there's a pressure on in terms of wages.
So I'm withdrawing my seconding of the motion. I was on side for the $20,000, I'm not on side for 50% without having any documentation. I don't know what the $52,000 is for, I don't know what the debts were incurred, I do not have their financial statements and I'm surprised we're discussing it without seeing all of that information before us first.
Okay, so I'll go back to Counselor Partridge and I have a seconder to her motion if she can restate it, please.
Yes, and I think I'd also like to include in there that there be a letter of understanding attached to the $100,000 and that it include, that it clearly lay out the partnership or the relationship around that $100,000 and that it include that they be staying in Hamilton and that they give a commitment to be staying in Hamilton.
Okay, this is a little bit more than a friendly amendment, so...
Well, it would be a second part then, since I've lost my seconder and I'm gaining another seconder.
Okay, so I'm going to...
I'm adding it in as a second part.
Okay, so then I'll come to you for the second part. So the part A would be, it's the preamble with that the city of Hamilton approve a one-time grant in the amount of $100,000 to the Canadian Football Hall of Fame and it be funded through the Capitol, Hamilton Capital Projects Reserve, 108035. I think you had indicated a, an advance in the amount of...
Yes, that $50,000 be advanced with the balance dependent upon receiving the financials and the letter of understanding. That needs to be, it would need to be signed, right?
If I could just add, the lease, I understand, we have a lease till 2017. 2017, Jay, or 2018? 2017. So basically what we've been asking to get, we just don't want to leave it to the end. And so I've asked our city manager a few months ago, and now that we got our new chair, to start the motions going forward of where we're going to do, to extend that lease, renew the lease, but the whole difference of the board is they're committed to staying in Hamilton, I know that for a fact, where there was some trouble before. And that was because the location that we're in. I think we're past that point. So all I can say is, this is the request, the rest of it, Mr. Murray has been working on and now with the CFL, Labor Talks out of the way, I think there's a little bit more energy in the CFL side is going to come on, but there is intent there, but I don't know if we're going to get everything so quick, if that's what you're saying in your motion.
No, if I, through you, if I can clarify, I'm saying advance that $50,000, but as far as getting the other $50,000, that it be dependent...
Right.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm not saying hold up all the money, I'm saying that it be dependent on receiving the financials. And there has to be a sense of urgency on their part to complete this information for us and I'm hearing that...
Absolutely, but I think everybody should be clear, this is not the CFL, this is the Canadian Football Hall of Fame and Museum that resides in Hamilton that was given to us. So it's a partnership between the museum and us. The CFL is just the board of, they have some people on the board that sit on there as board directors, just like we do as a city council, okay, there's some of their alumni and so we all try to work, basically of yearly funding, that we all go out, work hard to make sure that survives and that's what we're trying to do here. Did you just run into a glitch this year, that's all.
Okay, so just for clarity, so the initial $50,000 would be advanced with no conditions? The second part would be that the additional $50,000 would be provided subsequent to what you asked for?
Yes.
Okay? Thank you. Counselor Johnson, please.
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate the compassion and the hard work for our colleagues and for the people who sit on the Canadian Football Hall of Fame. My understanding is that we lease them the space, do we charge them lease or is it free?
Do we lease the space to them?
You said we have it till 2017, they have it?
All that building was, is that that building was the Hall of Fame, so it was given to us, okay, and we maintain that in gift and kind.
Okay, so they don't pay rent, correct? I guess?
No.
Is that our, okay. I have, I have some trepidations here and I don't want to keep bringing up old news, but I think it took me how long to get $5,000 for the Ernie Lee Museum through the CPP grant system? And it wasn't their fault, it was just getting people connected. I really have a hard time if we're not seeing the financials, if it's $50,000 now and we find out that they're doing better than we thought, hallelujah. If they're not doing, what if they're doing worse? So does the other $50,000, now we've committed ourselves to the $50,000, the extra $50,000, what happens? So I guess, no, we're giving them $50,000 pending the receiver, receiving of the financial statements, then we give them the next $50,000 with a letter of understanding. So what if the financial statements prove otherwise? Then we're still committed now to give them the second $50,000?
No, we're not.
So I didn't hear that in the motion, that when we receive the financial statements, depending on what good shape they're in or, I don't know how you word that, but I guess I'm really, I guess I'm just, I understand the compassion, I understand where you're coming from and the urgency and that's the other thing that concerns me is, how come it came now? If this was something that's been on the books for a while, couldn't it have come a month ago, two weeks ago, last council meeting, and this could be your notice of motion and then this could be coming forward now and you'd have all this information? So I think it's really tough that you've been put into this position and that you're asking us to go along with something I think you didn't have any choice on and I think that's not fair.
And through you, Mr. Chair, and I understand due diligence that our councillors are taking and all I can say is the sponsorship and finding out that we're not eligible for any kind of grants from the federal and the province and the red, money that we had budgeted for at the beginning and that didn't come in.
So my question then is, when did you find out that all this came crashing down? Was it two days ago, was it a month ago?
Because we didn't have a board meeting last month and I guess nobody would have known, but it was Counselor Farr and myself, we found out yesterday afternoon just by a phone call on Monday night that could we come there.
Okay, then my question to you, sir, is that you've been put in this position, I'm sure you don't want to be in right now, you found this all out yesterday. What was the plan on the Canadian Football Hall of Fame prior to yesterday when you found out?
I don't know, they've been doing only into overdraft, I understand, and then they have to have, basically, it's a security of almost the same cash when they go into their overdraft, but all I can tell you that the information I know right now and the information I have, being a representative on that, is I've been questioning them because we had to grow off sick and they have to, she's on pregnancy leave, where to the point where I was even stopping them from hiring anybody else because I was concerned about we didn't have the funds.
Okay.
Okay, so there is, there is due diligence there from the board members, I'm surprised, it's like you are being today, I was surprised yesterday afternoon, so that's all I can say.
And I appreciate the efforts that you're putting forward to this and I hope you don't have to be put in this position again, but, and my other question is the CFL, yes it is a football hall of fame, but no, with all due respect, we're holding their crown jewels, we've got the Grey Cup, we've got their MFP, the Most Valuable Player, we've got all their trophies, we've got all their, all their memorabilia, their archives, we've got it all for them, where's their contribution to this? Because we're basically holding the safe for them.
They contribute some cash each year, very, I wouldn't say a great amount, but they do everything they can to promote through the football games, having the Grey Cup, Game Day, promotion on their helmets, that's all they do in gift and kind. I understand where you're coming from, I've had a good talk with the CFL, hoping that they could come with more, but they're not in a, they're not in a financial position where they could. We've even come up with some ideas of all the teams contributing, do something, but I want to tell you, the CFL and the Hall of Fame, it's two different groups of people.
Thank you.
One just holds the cup for them.
Okay, and thank you, and I still think I'm going to stand firm on this, I'm not comfortable with this amount of money and with no financial statements to back this up. And I think really it's just not fair to colleagues that are sitting around this table to be put in this position, so I'm sorry, I'm going to hold firm on my decision that I can't support this.
So I'm going to go to the amendment now that was moved by Counselor Pearson, sorry, I did not.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and I guess I just want to put my comments forward. If I could ask two questions, because I'm sorry, there's so many loose ends on this and I really feel bad for both council reps on this, on this committee, I know you guys have put your heart and soul in it, I can tell, but there's just all the loose ends of thinking. First off, when was their year end? No? When was their year end?
The financial year end?
Their financial year end.
They go on January to December.
January to December, okay, thank you. And you're asking tonight for the $100,000, saying $52,000 pays their outstanding wages and possibly some debt now.
Yes.
How long would $100,000 keep them afloat?
They, from the information, when I was asking the same question, the, about the $52,000 and everything would pay them up to the point where when they started receiving some more funding that I believe it could be in September, Counselor, in the fall, when the other funding would come in, it would keep them afloat going. The other was for some seed money, and that's what we're talking about, is to help them to consulting costs, relocation, expenses, I guess you could say, for looking around of going forward, because it's going to be very, very difficult for the Hall of Fame to be doing this by themselves.
Okay, and I have to concur with my previous colleagues on speaking here that I really do want to do something, but I'd rather see a financial statement, I'd like to feel more secure in what actually is there, how serious it is and some other information before we make decisions on this, so I really have some major problems. Mr. Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Counselor Whitehead, please.
Again, I appreciate and understand, but this is about people getting paid for work done. And if you don't want to do that on the $55,000, because that's what this amendment stands for, then, then God bless you, God bless you. But I certainly can't support not paying salaries for people that put their time in. As far as the balance of it, I think it's quite reasonable what's being requested. You will get the statements, you will get the MOU, I think is what was requested, and what we, I think the caveat, and then maybe the friendly amendment would be that the other $50,000 wouldn't be released until the council was satisfied with the financial statements. And so that would be, you had a decision that would have to be rendered once received and back to the committee. That's one friendly caveat I would add to the amendment, so that means the balance wouldn't be automatically released until this committee was satisfied. But I think it's pretty clear through our city manager, the urgency of, I think he said $52,000, I guess we're going to make them, score them on $50,000, I think that's legitimate. I think that Counselor Farr and Counselor DeVall have been very, worked very hard on this committee. I know that they've done everything they can to raise money more, beyond and above what the responsibilities are as a board member, to try and raise additional revenue for the Football Hall of Fame. And I think that our city manager is quite comfortable with the knowledge and the information that he has. I don't think for $52,000, ensuring that the staff are getting paid in a timely fashion is too much to ask.
So just as, through you, Deputy Mayor, as Mike, as Zagarik and I are listening to the conversation and the concerns here, there may be a way in which we can kind of ease some of the concern. So Mike, I think just I'll ask you just to maybe suggest a way in which we can kind of, you know, address the interest of all that are discussing this right now, so Mike.
Mr. Zagarik, please.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, recognizing that the Hall of Fame may have a cash flow crisis and are required to make payroll and given the discussions around the table this evening concerning minimizing the risk of the taxpayers' funds, one option may be a loan to the Football Hall of Fame of $50,000. That's subject to the delivery of the financial statements and any additional information that council is seeking may be converted to a grant. But one option would be in terms of the urgency with respect to cash flow, is a loan of up to $50,000 direct staff to meet with... to $50,000, direct staff to meet with the Football Hall of Fame with respect to a payment schedule of, for that loan, and so that may provide some requirement for the Football Hall of Fame to provide the necessary reporting, including the financial statements, and provides council the option to convert that loan to a grant at a future date, subject to the provision of the information that council requires.
Thank you. Councillor Clark, please.
The question was raised earlier, and councillor Whitehead indicated that the $52,000 was for payroll. I heard it was payroll and debt, so can I understand exactly what the payroll is? I asked for the list, we don't have the list, but someone should be able to say what payroll is owed, and what the debt is.
Councillor Clark, I would be making up numbers if I answered you right now. I do know that, we do have three staff on, and I do know that some money is owing the Canadian Revenue Agency, okay, and I don't, I don't recall the others then, when I seen the sheet of what it was. What I did hear is that the total was about $52,000 and some odd dollars within the next couple of weeks, and, but some of it was as early as Monday that these payments had to be made, so. Now, if you want Mr. Zagarik to go over the, you know, if he can, if we can instruct him to go over there to appease us, I mean, we're not here tonight making this stuff up, that's for sure.
And I'm not-
You know, this is a partnership that, I've been asked to be a representative of the board, I'm being responsible, and I'm bringing this back, because that's my job.
And I'm not questioning that, but for us to expend the money, we need to know exactly what's going on, and my understanding, there were conversations going on for months, but it hasn't come here to bring this information to us. We didn't have, we're not provided the financial statements, and we're now at $50,000 in debt and salary, and I don't know what that means for the rest of the six months, because I don't have the financial statements, so I can't tell exactly what they're committed to. And a loan as being suggested by Mr. Zagarik is an option, all intents and purposes, is a grant by any other name, because they can't pay their debt now. So if we lend them the money, we're realistically saying we're going to write it off in six months, because they don't have the money to pay the loan.
Can I just ask a question, is, if, if, do we have two weeks to get the, you don't have the two weeks?
We wouldn't here.
Well, hang on. Okay, so we had a, we had an amendment offered up by councillor Partridge with a suggestion made by councillor Whitehead for finessing it, so where are we now?
Okay, so we've been finessing. So I've just, I've just had a conversation with Mike Zagarik on this, and around the whole idea of it being a loan, and so what we would get rid of would be, that it would be a one-time grant, and so adding subsection B, that a $50,000 loan be issued, with the balance being dependent on receiving a copy of the 2013 financials, and a letter of understanding signed between the city, the, sorry, the Football Hall of Fame and the city, and that it come back to council. And so that means that it would then come back to council, the letter of understanding and the financials, so we would be able to see that before that other $50,000 is expended. But in discussions with Mike, so the $50,000 would be a loan, in discussions with Mike, there was a loan, perhaps, Mike, I'll ask you through the deputy mayor, could you just speak to a previous loan that the Football Hall of Fame had?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, there was a loan between the Football Hall of Fame and the city dating back to 1999, and that loan was paid back in February 2013.
Okay.
And, sorry, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, the amount of that loan was $50,000 at that time.
Okay, so, so we're talking about still, still extend, still the $100,000, extending that $50,000, and that it be dependent on getting the 2013 financials, the letter of understanding, and that it come back to council for consideration before the other $50,000 is expended, and I'm seeing, sorry.
And that was for the additional, the final $50,000?
For the additional, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct, okay, and it's seconded by councillor Whitehead.
We ready to go to the motion?
Yes.
So on the amendment, all those in favor?
Here.
Opposed? The amendment is carried, on the main motion as amended, all those in favor?
Here.
Opposed? The motion is carried. This white page that says notice of motion, which didn't have a name on it, is from councillor Councillor Whitehead is requesting a waiver of rules to allow the introduction of this motion on a, seconded by councillor Duval, I understand. A motion to, a motion to waive the rules to allow the introduction of a bump up. On the waiver, okay, councillor Park?
I'm trying to understand the urgency, this seems to be all about policy. So what's the urgency in us waiving the rules tonight, and not giving us an opportunity to do our own research to find out what's going on?
Well, actually, that's a good question, and I will, I think that latitude moving forward is important. The reason why this is before us today, this has been something I've been working on for months with our legal department, I've been holding off on it, the last few days, we've been getting inundated, I know councillor De Vell and myself have been getting inundated with calls, I got a number here, a number of calls, or emails, that I can read off to my colleagues, in regards to these gruesome postcards, that their kids at 10 and 12 and eight years old are filing at their doorsteps, and in one case, the one woman, her son got sick, and sent these emails last night, and asked, begging and pleading that the council do something. Now, we know that we've got limited powers, if you look at and read this particular motion, it identifies that we really don't have the powers, all it is doing is asking, and framing, if you read it, it's very comprehensive, but it's framing the question to the federal and provincial governments, who do have the power to review their current policies.
Okay, I think we're into discussion, I think he set the parameter for the request for the waiver of the rules.
And again, there's no urgency, because it's all policy, so I should be granted sufficient time to review what's there in this motion, the public should be granted the time to review it, and make comments to their colleagues, to the councillors, throw this out on the floor, and have it passed without any public discourse, I know you've been having it, I haven't, I haven't had complaints. So I'm a little bit concerned about this, this is not what the waiver of rules is all about.
So, whole question. Whole question. Well, you can't, you moved it, but I'm going to call the question, because it was appropriately moved and seconded, all those to allow the waiver of rules to allow the introduction of this as a motion, all those in favor?
Carried.
Opposed? Motion is carried. You have before you the motion.
Mr. Chair, moved by myself, seconded by councillor De Vell, I'm going to read it, because I think it's important to those that are listening, whereas the Canadian Centre for Bioethical Reform is on an educational pro-life organization reportedly undertaking across Canada, an 18-year campaign to, in its words, convey the true horror of abortion when words are insufficient, and whereas the campaign CCBR is distributing materials throughout the community, such as doorknob cards, putting up banners in public places, such as over highways like the Lincoln-Hamilton, and whereas the distributed materials and banners display graphic and disturbing images of aborted fetuses, which are gruesome, and which reportedly, in words of CCBR, are intended to convey true horror, and whereas the CCBR itself says, the materials and banners are graphic and disturbing and aim to outrage people, and whereas based on the complaints received by the city, and many city councillors, that the CCBR is correct, such that the materials and banners have been unnecessarily upsetting for children, have been making other vulnerable persons violently ill, and whereas the CCBR and other anti-abortion and pro-life groups are entitled to publicize their viewpoint and position in keeping with the freedom of expression, subject to section 1 limitations under the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms, but should be able to mount a very effective campaign in a way that is not deeply troubling for children, or in any way that does not cause unnecessary physical discomfort or mental anguish to other vulnerable persons in the community, and whereas other jurisdictions, such as the state of Colorado in the USA, there has been regulations passed, which have been upheld, even in the Court of Appeal level, restricting the use of aborted fetuses in display materials and banners in order to shield them from children and other vulnerable persons, and whereas the provincial and federal governments should take action, each their own areas of jurisdiction, to prevent such graphic gruesome and disturbing images from reaching children and other vulnerable persons, and whereas there's, already exists legislation at both the federal and provincial levels, such as the area of commercial advertising to children under 13, anti-smoking advertising, tobacco sales advertising, alcohol sales advertising, all directed at inappropriate advertising to children and other vulnerable persons, which regulations have been legally upheld, and whereas there has been advertising regulations in private sectors, such as the Advertising Code of Canada, and various advertising provisions and codes of ethics, for the various provisions in terms of ethical and appropriate advertising, now therefore be resolved, that the city of Hamilton respectfully requests the Government of Canada, through the Prime Minister and the province of Ontario, through the premier, to consider enacting legislation and regulations in all aspects of the particular jurisdictions, deal with advertising and communication, such as broadcasting telecommunications advertising, or consumer protection advertising, to prevent the use of graphic gruesome and disturbing images of aborted fetuses in display materials, advertising posters, banners, and other mediums, as a part of an anti-abortion or pro-life campaign, at least to extend that such images are shielded from children and other vulnerable persons, and that the CCBR and other committed to the principles of anti-abortion and pro-life be informed, that this resolution and any action arising there, thereout, is not in any way intended to prevent any educational pro-life campaigners that they wish to undertake, but rather to ensure that any such campaigns are undertaken in a manner that provides appropriate protection from those images for children, and prevents other vulnerable persons in society from being seriously ill physically or mentally from seeing such images, and three, that the resolution be forwarded to the municipalities of Ontario, AMO, and to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities for their endorsement and support in bringing this important matter to the attention of the federal and provincial governments.
Speaking to it, councillor, or is it self-explanatory?
Thank you. Through you, Deputy Mayor, to Janice. Janice, I've been getting a lot of complaints about some of the material that's hanging over the overpasses on, especially the Lincoln-Alexander Expressway, and when my resident phoned the police and asked them to do something, they basically came back and said, sorry, our hands are tied. Can you please explain to me what can happen or not happen? Bylaw, police?
Sure, through the deputy mayor. So the, there has been an amendment enacted by council to the traffic bylaw that clearly prohibits banners and other materials hanging from, or suspended from, or hung over, draped over, the overhead-
Overpasses.
The overpass, sorry, thank you.
No problem.
And just because of the timing, there, there's a short delay to get the short-form wording put in place, but notwithstanding that, short-form wording would enable a police officer or a municipal law enforcement officer to basically issue a short-form worded ticket on the spot. Nevertheless, the amendment is in place, clearly there is a, if there is a violation of that, any police officer or any municipal law enforcement officer of the city can speak to and issue the appropriate Part III information. So if there is a contravention, the mechanism to enforce is in place in the bylaw, it can be enforced immediately, it is in place now, it would have to be enforced through issuance of a Part III Provincial Offences Act information, but police and municipal law enforcement officers are certainly very familiar with Part III informations, they're issued all of the time, so there is certainly no issue with enforcement.
Thank you, so is there, through you, deputy mayor, to Janice, is there some sort of a disconnect here, or is the information not filtered through, or what's happening when we've got a bylaw we've asked to be put in place? The police can actually issue a Part III right now, until the short word, the short terms start to come, so they can whip up the ticket and write something in quickly. So until they are able to write up the ticket, sorry, Ida, so when they, oh, that's better. So we got the ticket, we got the Part III, or the actual ticket that they can write, what's the timing here?
So, okay, through the deputy mayor, let me just take a second to back up, is there a disconnect? The disconnect would be probably that the chain of command at the police have not had the opportunity to cascade this down to their uniformed staff in a way that they normally would, because that enactment was just passed by council very, very recently, I believe it might have been-
Fair enough.
...the previous cycle or two cycles ago. So possibly that information is just not cascaded down to the officers, but I believe that certainly, as of this morning, we were communicating from our office to the police to make sure that the appropriate chain of command were being made aware of that. In terms of the timing, so setting aside the short-form wording, let's assume that we're looking at a three-week perhaps delay on having the municipal law enforcement officers and police officers in a position to issue a ticket, because you need to have, you need to have a short-form phrase that's approved-
That's right.
-in order to use that short-form wording on a ticket. So without that, they can certainly still, as in all other offenses, rely on a Part III information, which is where the officer, whether it's municipal law enforcement or police, have to take sufficient information down, just as with the ticket, and then they basically return to their office and write up a Part III information, which is then sworn by a JP, and it is served on the individual.
Okay.
So however, as a first line of action, the police officer or the municipal law enforcement officer would say to the individual who is suspending a banner or whatever, excuse me, sir, ma'am, you are violating the city's municipal bylaw in this regard, and I'm going to have to ask you to move on.
Okay, so there is some things that can be put into place right now, that are in place, when the residents are going to and from work, they're on the Lincoln, and accidents could appear, there is something in place, so it's just a matter of this morning, as early as this morning, things were sent over to the police department, let's, okay. So thank you, and I'll go offline for the rest of that, please, deputy mayor, because I'd like Janice to help me with the response to the residents who are concerned, thank you.
We ready for the motion? All those in favor?
Here.
Opposed? The motion is carried. That, is there any further notices of motion?
Yes.
You're right.
There were a notice to adjourn.
You're right, please, no. Statements by members, councillor Partridge, please.
Yes, thank you.